A seven thirty, seven forty-five timeframe. He asked me to get the meeting started, kick it off, and obviously when he joins, he'll pick up with his normal responsibilities. So Trish, we're ready to roll. Let's see, we're recording.
Yeah.
Okay. Sorry. Said you were ready?
Yeah.
I am.
Okay. Like to call to order the regular meeting of the Ansonia Board of Aldermen. Today's date is May eleventh, two thousand twenty-one. Uh, seven P M. Uh, I'd like to ask everybody first to all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag.
The United States of America and to the Republic of which stands. Under God, indivisible, liberty, justice.
Okay, thank you. Trish, can I have a roll call, please?
Yes, Alderman King.
There.
Alderman Stowe.
Uh, Charlie, Trish, Charlie will be joining a little bit later by phone. I just, just want to note that.
Thank you. Alderman Phipps.
Yeah.
Alderwoman Tar.
Yeah.
Alderman Cassetti.
Present.
Alderman Janetti.
Here.
Alderman Spigorolo. Alderwoman Strowman.
Here.
Alderman Yowman.
Here.
Alderman Rivers.
Here.
Alderman Mamon.
Here.
Alderman Stewart. Alderman Blackwell. Alderman De Libro.
Yeah, here.
I have ten present and four absent.
Okay, I declare a quorum. All right, can, uh, first off, the meeting minutes from the previous Alderman meeting, is there a motion to accept those minutes?
They're moved.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Right, so we have a motion by Alderwoman Strowman. Alderwoman Strowman, second by Rivers, all in favor?
Just a point of clarification. If I can, just make sure those are the regular minutes from April thirteenth and not the meeting at the, uh, public hearing minutes from the twenty-seventh, right?
That is correct. Okay, the regular meeting from April thirteenth, sorry about that. Okay, so we had the all in favor, uh, anyone opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries, thank you. Okay.
I did submit the April twenty-seventh, if you want to approve them, the public hearing on the budget.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the minutes?
Make a motion.
Motion by Rivers, seconds.
Yeah.
Yowman. Okay, all in favor? Any opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries, thank you. Thanks for that, Trish. Um, okay. Public session. For our open public session, just want to remind everybody, you know, three minutes, uh, you know, to state your piece. Additionally, it's not a question and answer session, I think we've, uh, you know, mentioned that before, so with that, I will open the public session. Either by lagging us down, raising your virtual hands. Dave Connolly, please state your name and address for the record.
Okay. Dave Conley, fifty-three North Prospect Street Extension, Ansonia. I'm here tonight to update the board about activities at Colony Pond in Eight Stone Park. Colony Pond was designated as community fishing water by the Department of Energy and Environmental Protection in two thousand fifteen, when they started docking it with trout. Since the pandemic, the D E E P has been holding online classes on Zoom. Part of the class is a fishing trip. The D E E P is setting up a tour of community fishing waters to serve as the fishing trip for those students. The date set for Colony Pond is May twenty-third, from two P M till six P M. Colony Pond would also start to be stocked with catfish this month and continue annually. The stocking could happen on the twenty-third with the fishing event. They will also have a new trailer showing with fishing opportunities in Connecticut with some giveaways for anyone who comes to the event. We're also starting live classes again in June. We have one scheduled for June third at the Armory with a fishing trip to Colony on the fifth from nine to noon. We'll also bring back the Bill Stokes Memorial Fishing Derby on the following Saturday, June twelfth. The Oxford Fishing Club will be providing trophies with three.
Right.
To have prizes for every participant.
You mute Gloria Caulfield?
Social distancing and masks will be required for the class and the derby. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Dave, that's, that's a great update. Okay, is there anybody else from the public that would wish to speak?
I had a question for Dave. What? Do we need to have licenses to go fish in there?
Yes, if you're over sixteen, you need a license.
Thank you.
You can get them online.
I don't see any other.
It looks like Stan wants to make a statement, I can see him waving.
Can you hear me?
There you go, Stan, we can hear you.
Okay, my name is Stan Kapinos. I live at Eight Kruger Court on the hilltop at Ansonia. And I sent a email last month to all of the aldermen and women and the mayor as well about the property at one twenty-six Ford Street. Uh, today I also sent an email to Joshua Swart and Alderman Blackwell, Di Liberto and Mayor Cassetti. And briefly, in my email, I state that I am communicating with you requesting that the Board of Aldermen appoint a citizens panel to explore all the possible options for the long-term improvement of the property at one twenty-six Ford Street in Ansonia. If you're not familiar with that address, it is what people call the old Mariner Healthcare Facility. Uh, as a neighbor of this property for over thirty-five years, I have witnessed the land go from a cornfield to a first-class health facility to what is now an abandoned neglected building. Uh, it's difficult for me to imagine what the future holds for this facility, uh, this building, but I'm confident that unless the neighborhood becomes actively involved in, the current situation won't change. In talking with my neighbors, some of our concerns regarding this property are ownership, security issues, building maintenance, upkeep of the grounds, property tax and options for long-term improvement. Uh, back in the nineties, the city, uh, changed the zoning, uh, for this area from residential to facilitate the nursing home. And we, the citizens, were assured that this would be a benefit to the city long-term and, um, that no longer is the case. So I'm asking the board to work with, um, local citizens to appoint a citizens committee to explore all the possible options for one twenty-six Ford Street. Thank you.
Thank you, Stan. Is there anybody else from the public that would wish to speak? Scrolling, I don't see any virtual hands. See anybody waving? Public session going once, is there anybody from the public that would wish to speak? Public session going twice. Don't see anybody. John, does anybody, you see anybody waving? I don't see anybody. Third and final call for public session, does anybody wish to speak from the public tonight?
Daddy, stop cutting your chicken up. Tell daddy to come up.
Glory, mute yourself.
Sorry.
Okay, with that, I close public session. Uh, I did want it noted that there was a communication sent in from a resident. Trish, I would like it noted that this resident was unable to be here, he did submit a statement. I will forward that to you as well as to Beth to have included in the minutes, if you don't mind, please.
Okay, very good.
Okay, all right, moving on to the official session, Mayor Cassetti.
Good evening, President Stewart, Acting President Mammon, members of the Board of Aldermen, residents of the great city of Ansonia. I want to announce tonight that the next vaccination clinic with Griffin Hospital will be this Thursday and it will be open to anyone twelve years old and older at the Armory. Griffin will continue to run the clinics every Thursday at the Armory until further notice. So I encourage Ansonia residents who have not gotten vaccinated to do so. You can call for an appointment at two oh three nine two two three nine seven five, but walk-ins are also welcome. We have a lot of economic activity going on in the downtown area. Taco Central looks beautiful and we are awaiting notice of an opening any day now. Many of you may have noticed the stucco covering the tower of our new police building. I know that Bantam is prepping and cleaning up the construction site at the entranceway. And the tower really looks amazing with the, with the new windows. The building is really coming together and I want to take a moment to especially thank Tenor Construction, our owner's representative. This board and everyone for all their hard work and overseeing this important project for us. We believe we are on target for a ribbon cutting this summer. The Palmer Building has a new roof after decades and the Riverwalk has begun installing sedimentation fencing. They will be laying out the path in the next few weeks. You will hear more about these and other projects and grants from our Economic Development Director later on. As important as economic development is, there's nothing more important than the quality of life for our residents. And I hear your concerns relative to the rock crushing and Burns Construction. Let me first assure you that the quality of life for our residents is our top priority. I am therefore happy to report that this past Thursday morning in a court pre-trial, Attorney Marini has worked out an arrangement between the city, the attorneys for Burns Construction and the attorney for the residents. Burns will be bringing forth an application to planning and zoning, which will allow the board to establish regulations and clarifications with respect to rock crushing activities in a heavy industrial zone. And the residents will have a voice in this process. A public hearing will be held where residents can voice their concerns before a decision is rendered by the Planning and Zoning Commission. Let's see the facts speak for themselves. As you know, Ansonia is a small city. We are densely populated municipalities where we have industrial next to residential, next to commercial. We must all work together side by side to create the kind of balance in quality of life that our residents deserve. If COVID has shown us anything, it has taught us that by working together, we can overcome any challenge we face. Together, I am confident that we will work out a solution that creates harmony for our residents and for our industry. Finally, I will mention that as a gesture of goodwill to the community, Burns Construction has offered to adopt a spot at Gaddison Park. In upcoming month, they will be replacing and fixing the fencing, removing all the mulch areas and replacing it with mulch beds and with new mulch and completely paving and striping the basketball court, giving a facelift to the park. We thank them for their donation to our community. Thank you and God bless you all.
Thank you, Mayor. And Mayor, just, you know, as an aside, your granddaughter is absolutely beautiful behind you.
Thank you very much. That's where she's at. I look at her every day.
Looking over your shoulder.
In person. Love her dearly. Thank you.
Okay, moving on next, Corporation Council, John Marini.
Good evening, uh, members of the board. As the, as the mayor mentioned, a pre-trial was held just this past Thursday on the Burns Construction matter. All parties were in agreement to pause the legal proceedings as Burns Construction voluntarily makes an application to planning and zoning. And that will allow the board to consider regulations of what is a legally permitted activity for the benefit of the residents in the surrounding neighborhood. And the public will have, as the mayor said, a voice in the process. So we'd really like to thank council for both the residents and Burns Construction for working together on a path forward and a solution here to meet in the middle. Um, I want to point out, there is a resolution on for, uh, tonight, a home rule resolution. And, uh, there was some misinformation circulating. We want to stress that this resolution in support of a standing by home rule has nothing to do with how the city zones. It actually has everything to do with the state of Connecticut and how it has been tending to infringe on the right of cities and towns to zone. For example, how the Siding Council right now has an ability to grant an application for a solar field on Ben Street. You know, we've all seen how that application, uh, has, uh, fortunately has nothing to do with what our zoning boards determine is right. So this resolution is standing up against the expansion of that ability of the state to dictate zoning and to tell the city, uh, what it needs to do, uh, with its properties. Uh, on another topic, contracts in the city are moving forward. We've had quite the year for them with just about every contract on the city's side being negotiated within a single year. Supervisors as the last to go. Uh, but as we, as we start to close in on the end, we're going to be preparing a summary for the benefit of the public to hear what's been going on because as, as you as aldermen have known, uh, we've got some really great results this year. For example, uh, with our clerical and public works contracts, we have agreements that actually cost less overall than their predecessor contracts, while actually increasing the quality of health insurance for the employees. And that kind of progress with savings and benefits for the employees is, is really unheard of. So it's, it's a very big win. Um, and we want to thank the Teamsters for being great negotiating partners in the process on both of those contracts. Another big component of that was our, uh, progress with the Ansonia Library. And as you hear a little later from, uh, Mr. Miller, one of our big goals in this negotiation was to allow full-time library staff, when they retire, have the option to replace them with part-time staff. And that puts us in a position, given the current staffing of the library, to expand staffing hours at little or no expense at all to the city. Uh, it's almost, you know, to, to really bump up the staffing hours to be able to expand, uh, hours of operation and to get the coverage we need. So we're very, very thankful, uh, for Teamsters for being great partners during the negotiation process. Finally, um, some real exciting news hopefully coming up. We had a conversation this morning in Derby, uh, with Mayor Zeke and Mayor Cassetti and Sheila and myself with the Derby Senior Center. And there is right now some potential for a regional senior center at sixty-five Main Street. Uh, we're going to be plugging our Ansonia seniors, Ansonia seniors and elderly commission into the mix, possibly getting a meetup here between the Ansonia seniors and the Derby seniors and the Derby Board of Aldermen. Uh, later in the month, we're going to be considering, uh, our proposal to regionalize. And we're going to be taking this back to this board likely by next month to talk about the details. So we're very excited about the possibility there to work with our neighbor city. And finally, I'm going to be reaching out to call a meeting of our tenant committee that, uh, we had some volunteer aldermen sign up for within the next two weeks to get to work on some new regulations regarding inspection of apartments and of course outreach to tenants. Just want to let the board know, we, we do have an ongoing issue with Ten State Street that was sort of our big priority problem. Um, that's a church that was being rented illegally as an apartment. Um, no such apartments have ever been legal at Ten State Street. It was essentially the rental of a, of almost a pit area, almost a dungeon area in the basement of that church. Uh, and, and we will be working with, uh, Ansonia Police to pursue appropriate charges against the owner. Right now, there's a lien on the property that stems from our placement of the tenants that were in that dangerous situation. Um, and that lien right now remains on the property and we're taking a careful look at, at what to do in terms of the continued operation of that facility. So unless there are any questions, that's my update for, uh, tonight. Uh, and we have some issues, of course, in executive session.
Excellent. Thank you, Corporation Council, John Marini. Next up, we have the Economic Development Director, Sheila O'Malley.
Thank you, Acting President Mammon and, uh, members of the Board of Aldermen, residents of the city, great city of Ansonia. Um, we've got a lot going on as the mayor, uh, had mentioned in his, uh, his speech. And, um, just to touch on some of those things, you may have seen some cranes outside, um, on Main Street. With respect to one fifty-three Main Street, a new roof is being, uh, has been completed and has been placed on, uh, one fifty-three Main. And one sixty-five and four ninety-seven East Main, there's going to be, um, there's perimeter fencing around the roofs of both of those buildings and they will be getting new roofing next week. Demo is done on one fifty-three Main Street. Um, and every, everything has been demolished interior on four ninety-seven East Main. There's some, one floor that needs interior demo, uh, to be completed on four ninety-seven. And then they're waiting for, um, all of the material for the interior walling off of the apartments. Um, basement's been ripped out and cleaned up, stairwells have been, um, removed from both buildings. And brick has been, uh, next week, brick, uh, will be replaced, re- replaced on the exterior of the building in some spots. The, the Riverwalk is progressing with, uh, currently the layout of the, uh, walkway will start next.
Hey Sheila, hold on a second. Matt, can you, can you mute your phone? We're getting a lot of feedback coming through. Thank you, sorry, sorry Sheila, continue, please.
That's okay, no problem. Clearing and grubbing is occurring on the, uh, and at addition of topsoil for the Riverwalk project. We, um, we received word that, uh, Congresswoman Deloro had, um, gotten the, uh, approval for a house appropriation approval for two point five million dollars for Ansonia Copper and Brass. That has to pass the Senate, we feel confident it will, as well as does the Congresswoman. Um, and that's two point five million dollars for the, um, bridge into the, into Ansonia Copper and Brass from Riverside Drive. We have, uh, two outstanding requests in both with the state and the federal government for the extrusion mill on Ansonia Copper and Brass, um, to renovate that two hundred thousand square foot building and we've gotten two letters of interest for a, um, for potential tenants as well. Um, S H W is coming along, the, the remediation, um, will be ongoing. Shippo came in this week, last week to, um, take a look at the buildings and give their thumbs up to the demolition. Not sure how you couldn't give your thumbs up to the demolition. So that's moving along slower than we thought, but, but still moving. And so, uh, East Main Street, uh, out to bid, awarding the bid, waiting for the state to, uh, approve the authorization to award to Colona Construction Company, um, who will be starting the, the renovations on East Main Street. Just a few things, but I will stop now.
That's quite a laundry list.
Yep, quite, quite a few things, but I don't want to, uh, go on and on. If anybody has any questions, I'm happy to answer.
I, I did have one, Sheila, on East Main, did we have like a? When, when is it? That's actually going to get flipped to one way, correct?
Yes, it will be, yep, it'll be one, a one-way. Um, they're not going to prohibit traffic while the construction's going on, so try to, try to make at least, you know, and, um, there'll be a through way while construction is going on.
Okay.
But it'll be one-way going south.
Okay. Do, do we have any ETA on when that will be, not, not finalized, but, you know, kind of nearing completion?
Uh, East Main Street?
Yeah.
It's a, it's a probably a two-month project.
Okay, so by summer, you think it'll be completed?
Definitely.
Okay.
Mayor may, may want to weigh in on that, but I, I'm thinking three months.
He's muted.
Muted, Mayor.
By the time the state gives us authorization to award the bid, it's probably two months from the time of the start of the project, which probably won't be till June, so you're probably looking September.
Okay, all right, fair enough. Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions for Economic Development Director Sheila O'Malley?
A quick one, Sheila, um, update on Eagle, on, on Eagle Hoes?
Yep, Eagle Hoes bids will be back on the eighteenth. I'm sorry for the confusion with the invites, but yeah, we're going to do a bid opening on the eighteenth. Hopefully we'll get some good prices on that.
Okay, so that's in the works then?
Yes, yep. I just, um, I just want to add that I will have a, a few more things to say about the home rule resolution that you have before you, so, um, just want to weigh in on that, but I'll, I'll wait till you, uh, you address it. Sheila, could you also give the, the board an update on the senior center process? Absolutely, sorry about that, apologize. So right now, the, um, our owner's rep, Tenor, and Mike Marsenick from A, A I E P M, I hope I have that right. The architect, uh, the architects are working with Tenor to level the bids. Bring them, bring them down, uh, to where we, we think is a little bit more reasonable cost. And once they've done that, the, they're asking the three low bidders to come back in. They'll come down, they've already come down in price. Um, once they've, once they've completed that process, we'll award the bid to the low bidder and begin construction. So it, that's exciting, it should be done. Hopefully, we're, we're looking at a fall opening for the senior center. Um, and then we'll be, um, be working with Diane and the seniors to, uh, look at the furniture and order and make sure everything's ready for the opening.
Exciting news, exciting news.
I've got a question, Tom.
Oh, go ahead, Alderman Phipps.
Uh, directed through Sheila to the mayor. Mayor, did I understand that you say that the state has to make some approvals for the East Main Street?
Yes, the funding's coming from the state, so they'd have to approve it, um, at DOT for that.
Okay.
They, they authorize us, they authorize the awarding of the bid. So, and DOT is usually pretty good, pretty, pretty quick.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Phipps. Anybody else for Sheila? Oh, okay. Thank you, Sheila.
Thank you.
Moving on, I saw Police Chief Coda.
Yeah, I'm here. Good evening, everyone. Uh, I'll be quick tonight, it looks like you've got a full agenda. Uh, we did conduct a, uh, food drop at the Nolan Field as well as the Abundant Life Church on North Main Street today with the assistance of team, also running in conjunction with the food drop. Uh, and Nolan Field was a vaccine clinic, a mobile vaccine clinic run through Griffin Hospital. All went well today. They expect a, another one on May twenty-fifth. Um, to continue that at this time, we think that may be our last one in Ansonia for a, a period of time, but we'll get further updates on that. So we've been assisting with that for traffic and, uh, making sure everybody's getting in and out of those locations safely. Some of you may have seen or probably saw on the news, we made, uh, two arrests in the, uh, two thousand eleven homicide up at Extramar on Wakeley Avenue. Uh, we anticipate a third arrest. Uh, the third suspect is, uh, actually in jail, so we'll be working on taking care of that. But we were finally able to make, uh, two, two solid arrests on that with the hard work of our detectives and the officers in the department. We are in the process right now, this week and next week, of firearms recertification and other training that we'll be doing. We're up at the Ansonia Rod and Gun Club, they're gracious enough to let us use that area to, to, uh, do that. Uh, we still continue to work on a few, uh, of, uh, a number of, uh, stolen vehicle investigations along with catalytic converters. We're following up on that, we have our detective division trying to, uh, address and deal with that. address and deal with that. We are working with other towns, as I said last month, trying to identify suspects in, in these thefts. The other option, I know Sheila did mention about the, the building, and so did the mayor. That continues to move along very well. The tower's taking quite nice shape. I think they're putting their final, I'm not sure if they call it a skin coat, their final coat of paint on the outside of the tower. Looks very good. With that being said, you'll also see some construction that's occurring on Main at Maple Street. That is the state redoing the traffic lights and the crosswalk pedestrian lights there. That is not part of the Police Department project, although it happens to be going on at the same time. So you will see that right at that intersection for, for a period of time with the state of Connecticut. Also, speaking of the building, I believe the invitation's been sent forward to you, but tomorrow between 3:00 and 4:00 PM, we're inviting the Board of Aldermen and Alderwomen to come if they prefer to take a tour of the building to get an update on the status of what's going in, going on inside of the building. You can see what's going on on the outside from 3:00 to 4:00 PM tomorrow. Appropriate shoe wear, which means closed footwear. It is an active construction zone. And parking on East Main, if you meet us over by the trailer, you're more than welcome to come in and we'll show you around and give you an up-to-date tour of what's going on. And we'll have, some of our police personnel will be there also, along with the building committee. And that's what I have tonight for you.
Excellent. Thank you, Chief. Is there any questions for Chief Coda?
Can I ask one?
Go ahead, Joe.
Tony? Chief, Elm Street, is there any way we can get radar put over there? It's like Daytona 500. It's, it's horrible. These cars are, they gotta be doing 60, 70 miles an hour, some of them. It's unbelievable.
Yes, we can hear that.
It, it's, it's just very dangerous. Or with kids and things coming now, with summer coming up, with vacation and everything. I'd appreciate it.
Absolutely.
And another thing, I see your officers out there directing traffic for construction. They're doing a great job. I wish you would let them know that to keep up the good work.
I will. Thank you.
Thank you.
So I'm wondering, are they running some sort of laps, Joe, with, you know, the folks over in Joe Yalman's area too, because there was a lot of complaints on Wakeley? You know, folks were...
That was gonna be my next comment, Tony. So you know, I, I have it every month for the chief, because I, I hear from my constituents over here about the drag strip known as Wakeley Avenue. I know Diane in Chicago heard it as well. The loud noises, I mean, and you know, as people are opening their windows, summer times and things like that, motorcycles are getting out of control, the loud exhaust, the music, everything associated with that, chief. But I mean, I, I, we speak in between meetings. You're aware of it. I know you're doing what you can. And we're going to try to see if we can do some things in the ordinance committee to, to help you out and give you some additional tools in that regard. But I did, I did want, I wanted to make one comment, chief, because this is more on a personal note. You guys, you know, I live basically right across the street from Extramar. And I just wanted to, to, to extend my thanks to you and to the detectives for all the hard work and perseverance and making the arrests in that case in 2011. You know, my, my wife was very, very, very close to that while I was still at work and I had young children in the house. So I appreciate all the work that your department did in, in keeping that investigation going. And I know I had talked to Chief Hale about it back in the day about progress on it. And I just extend my thanks and gratitude to the detectives for all the hard work. I do appreciate it very much.
Thank you. And we continue to address the vehicles, not just on the west side, east side, hilltop. It seems to be pretty much everywhere. I know other departments are dealing with the same issue. So we will continue to look into these issues and, and work on resolving them.
Thank you, chief.
Yeah.
Everybody's in such a hurry lately, I guess, but is there any other questions for the chief? Nope. Thanks, chief. Stay safe.
Thank you.
All right. Next up, we have Superintendent of Schools, Dr. Joe Tobacco. I think you're out there. I saw you.
Hello, everyone, and good evening. I was going to try to be short like Chief Coda. And I do want to report that we had a, our prom last Friday. The kids enjoyed themselves, had, had a great time. Prior to that, we just had our National Honor Society induction ceremony. I won't be surprised very soon, as you heard about vaccinations moving down to 12 and older. I'm sure on Thursday afternoon, the governor at four o'clock will tell all the alliance districts that, guess what, I'm going to have to do something. And, but we are already working on that. We have our 16 and older vaccination clinics. We'll probably just extend it to those 12 and older at that same clinic. I wish we could just roll it into the city's clinic, but for whatever reason, I have to, as an alliance district, work with the health department and, and set up our own separate clinics. It could have been centralized. Also, that being said, Alderman Stewart wanted us to apply for this Teach Rock Grant. It's a Steven Van Zandt. I just want to let everyone know, I was given the award letter today that we did receive the grant. So I'm going to try to let Alderman Stewart give him the Zoom link for tomorrow, so he can say hi to Mr. Van Zandt himself. But I'm just happy to report that that went well. I do want to just kind of highlight our sports business class. We just did have two guest speakers come to our sports business class. We had the CFO of the Red Sox spoke to our students, and his name is Tim Zoo. And then the CEO of the New York Liberty came to speak virtually through Zoom to our students. I think it was pretty memorable. I think the students got to ask some high-powered people, some pretty awesome questions, but that's, that's where we're headed. I think that's a great step for our students. And then for those poor people that had to, that didn't watch me, I did, I was a commencement speaker at Quinnipiac School of Education this past weekend on Mother's Day, and I, I just hope I made Ansonia proud. And so I just want to let anyone know, if you have any questions, please ask, but I just wanted to keep it brief. And I appreciate the support of the Alderman and Alderwomen.
I think I speak for all of us, Joe. It was really inspiring. So you did a, nice job.
Rumor has it you're going to make a lot of money giving speeches, Dr. Joe.
I got a comment for Joe. I just want to say, I was playing chauffeur to my son. And that was a really nice and safe environment that, that the school put together for the prom. And I just want to thank you for all of the hard work that you're doing and all of the work that's ahead of you. And you did make us proud at that speech that you gave.
Thank you.
Just, just one last comment. I want to know if, you know, Mr. Marini is also going to get the link. Just want to know if Mr. Marini is going to get the link to meet Mr. Van Zandt as well. Sure he'd be honored for that.
I'll, I'll do that, but Bobby Todd looks like she has something to say.
I do. I was at the graduation, Quinnipiac, and I can tell you that the reaction from the students was that you were the best speaker of the weekend.
Oh, thanks. I didn't know you were there. That's awesome to hear. Thanks, Bobby. I just wanted to make, I wanted to make Ansonia proud, put us on the map. I got to sit next to the...
You were the most interesting speaker of everyone who was there.
Awesome. That's definitely what my wife would say, interesting. But I got to sit next to the president and after we, of the university, and after we got off the stage, she's like, we're going to do something with Ansonia. So just so you know, let's get ready. Because I took her up on that when we were during the recessional. And I'm, so I have Dennis Proto working on it and myself already. So I wanted to represent well, because I thought it was important. And, and I do think it, it did solidify, and I'm not going to lie to you, they did ask me to be an adjunct today. They called. But I'm a little busy, but it was, it was, I, I hopefully we represented Ansonia proud. And I want to see our kids go there as well. It's just a great school. And I think we can really develop a great relationship with, with Quinnipiac. They just added me to a grant too, for science teachers. So I think I did all right, if they're asking me all this stuff right now. So let's capitalize while they're asked. Well, I'm in their good graces. So we'll do that. But I'm here to answer any questions that you guys have.
Need an agent, let me know. Any other questions for Superintendent of Schools, Dr. Joe?
Yep, Joe, how's, how does the graduation look?
So the graduation, we're really waiting for the May 19th. Pretty much, it, it appears to me on May 19th, they're going to open everything up. And we said, once that happens, we'll, we'll be at, we'll be at Nolan. We originally said two tickets, but it looks like we, you, you're not going to do two tickets. You're, you can, my church says I can have shoulder to shoulder. So if my church says that we can do shoulder, they're going to, we're going to be able to have people in there. I do, I did just get a, a form in regards to testing. Some places are making or requiring some testing or or evidence of testing. I don't know if that's something that we're going to go down that road, but I, I do think there are some places that don't let kids, are not letting students go to the prom or attend things without negative tests, not just vaccination, but also negative tests. So where we are right now, I mean, we just got that information today. Something that talked to the board about, but it looks like we're going to have an, an open graduation on June 12th, nine o'clock in the morning, and right, right there on Nolan Field. And almost, you know, try to, try to separate. People will be wearing masks, but they don't really have to. So it's going to be, it's going to be interesting. Some people, and it's hard to enforce. So, but I could tell you, June 12th, nine o'clock, Nolan Field. It's probably going to be come all, come one, come all, even though you'd like to limit it, but that's what happens when you have it at Nolan. Everyone, everyone comes out. It's a, it is a community event, but Diane, you're right. They're going to have, you're going to have a lot of people there. So it's hard, it's hard to police. That's why the drive-up was kind of a wonderful thing and a blessing in one respect, because you could control it more. At Nolan, you're going to have people gathering, hugging, you know, squeezing each other up, rightfully so. It's a, it's a joyous event, but that's what we have so far.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Dr. Joe? Okay. Thank you. Next up, we have Chief Financial Officer, Kurt Miller.
Thank you very much, Mr. President, and good evening to all the board members and others in attendance. I would like to say to Superintendent Tobacco, as a season ticket holder, after your speech, our prices got jacked up 15%, so thank you very much for that. But work on the City of Ansonia Finance Department policies, which encompasses budgeting, bidding capital, fraud management, reserve, and fund balance, investment management, and purchase orders is still ongoing, while progress is being made on the review and update. We're still not ready to put it in front of the board for discussion and approval. Our goal is to have it ready by midsummer. We're currently working through a full review of our health insurance billing for all employees and retirees. We are updating our existing process and tracking methods to put new procedures in place to take effect from July 1st, 2021. Once this project is completed, we will have a much more efficient and effective process. I had a chance to sit down and review the library budget with our librarian, Jennifer Lester, and John Marini. Conversation was very productive, as I was able to review all of my notes from the planning documents I had been provided by Jennifer, as well as the notes from contract negotiations that have taken place over the last few months. The budget you'll be approving tonight comes from a plan that actually increases the total weekly staff hours from 244 pre-COVID to 262 effective 7-1, while more importantly, providing Jennifer with more scheduling flexibility to address the programming goals she has for the upcoming fiscal year. This plan also reduces our employee salary costs from $30.95 an hour to $25.67 an hour. We all agree that this budget plan sets the library up very nicely to be able to hit their goals for the upcoming fiscal year and helps to establish a stronger foundation that will allow the library to move forward in a productive fashion over the next several years. Finally, at our last meeting, I quickly introduced the topic of the city creating its own OPEB trust to help address our long-term obligations for other post-employment benefits. With us tonight is Catherine Canny, a Senior Manager with the Public Agency Retirement Services, or PARs. Kate will do a short presentation and answer any questions you might have regarding this very important issue. We have a resolution prepared for tonight, should the board wish to move forward and vote to approve, which I would strongly recommend. With that, and through you, Mr. President, I'm going to turn it over to Kate to do the presentation, to take any questions that you may have. And then I'll come back and finish up my report.
Thank you. Go ahead, Kate.
Thank you. I think I have some slides that we're going to be, oh, perfect. Thank you. All right. First of all, thank you for the invitation to meet with all of you this evening. I do appreciate your time, and I know that you have a very packed schedule, so I'll keep this moving forward. Next slide, please. So as Kurt said, my name is Kate Canny, and I work with Public Agency Retirement Services, PARs. And our name sums up pretty much what we do, is we are a trust and retirement administration company that works strictly with public agencies, that's school districts, municipalities, cities, special districts throughout the country, to help them address the cost and the impact of retiring, offering retirement programs. And this is just, this quick slide is just to show you the whole depth of field of what we offer. But tonight, I'm here to speak to you about our, our OPEB trust program. Next slide. So PARs has established a 115, Section 115 trust program, which is a multiple employer trust program that they offer to help pre-fund OPEB assets and to address retiree healthcare costs. What we've done is we've assembled a three-party team to provide this program. PARs, that are, as my employer, we serve as the trust administrator and consultant. We have been working with public agencies for 37 years in this field. Have over 1,000 plans under administration. That's everything from retirement incentives, pension, pre-funding, OPEB. Work with over 1,000 public agencies. We work to coordinate all the administrative aspects of the program and develop the, and maintain plan documents. Do all the monitoring, both on the state and federal levels, and with the IRS and GAZI, to make sure our program is fully compliant. We also work with, partnered with US Bank. They're the fifth largest bank and one of the largest providers of trustee custodial services. So they come in and serve as a fiduciary in this program. They're the custodian of the assets. And their role in this program is to act in the best interest of the beneficiaries, which are retirees. So they make sure that the assets are always being held in the best interest. And then we partnered with Vanguard, who you're all probably familiar with. And they're one of the largest investment companies worldwide. And they provide a low-cost investment option for this program. Next slide, please. So we have developed what's called a multiple employer trust. And one of the challenges that we found with OPEB pre-funding and addressing it is that the, the barrier to entry was one significant administrative burden initially and ongoing for agencies, and then the cost overall. So we put together a multiple employer trust where agencies can come together and operate under our trust program, which is pre-established and in place. And therefore, there are no startup costs or legal costs for the agency. And the trust is in place. And then we're able to bring Vanguard into the situation, into our program. So they provide economies of scale investment opportunity. One of the key things is when you're investing OPEB assets, you'd like, you are able to legally put them in a more diversified portfolio, but that can be very cost prohibitive to agencies. The Vanguard Fund that we've established, we have four different portfolios. The entry point for those is about $250 million. Well, PARs has put together clients from around the country. We have over $4 billion of assets under management in OPEB. So we're able to bring highly diversified portfolios to agencies that may not be able to participate in those on their own. To give you an example of our range of clients, I've had clients that have initiated an OPEB investment fund, their trust fund, with as little as $15,000. And then we have agencies that are up in the $3 million range. So that just gives you the ability to come together and participate in a lower cost. So we also, it's a Section 115 trust, as I said. It's IRS-approved, and we have what is called a private letter ruling. The key aspect of why this is important is you're maintaining that all of the assets going into your trust and coming out of your trust are non-taxable. So that is not a tax burden for the city or for the retirees. We have worked with We have um, worked with Edwards Wildman to make sure our, our program is fully compliant with Connecticut state law. And we also have federal attorneys that were monitoring any uh, federal and IRS changes, so that we're maintaining full compliance. We're also maintaining that our program is GAZI compliant. So GAZI uh, has three key requirements for an OPEB trust. One, that the assets need to be dedicated to retiree healthcare only. They need to be protected from creditors, so they keep safekeeping, and that the funds are irrevocable in the trust for anything but retiree healthcare. Next slide, please. So we've, we're ourselves is a one-stop shop. Uh, we've brought the three aspects of an OPEB trust together under the, this umbrella of the program, and I've touched on some of these things um, on the earlier slides. But as you can see, we bring the full service approach where we manage, manage trust administration and trustee services. We have ready-to-go uh, trust documents that are signature-ready, full state and federal compliance, uh, a low-cost investment option, uh, fiduciary investment management. Again, that's conducted by uh, US Bank. We support uh, the agencies we work with, departments to prepare all audit information and gathering for their audits, uh, contribution and distribution processing, and uh, we provide hands-on support for developing things like investment policy goals, funding policies, and that. Next slide, please. So uh, some of the questions we hear are why would you want to um, pre-fund OPEB and what are some of the benefits? Uh, well, first of all, it helps you at, address the liabilities that are on, that you're facing. It's um, looking at forward and saying we have this obligation that we're seeing for retiree healthcare. Uh, a more positive uh, rate of return for your investments because you're able to put them in a diversified portfolio. Uh, GAZI 75 requires that your retiree healthcare costs, your OPEB costs are listed as a liability on your financials. Helps you uh, deal with long-term planning. Uh, you're starting to address uh, the impact of the fluctuation in the cost of healthcare and any surges in retirement uh, for baby boom retirement bubbles. Next slide, please. Uh, you're protecting these funds by placing them in trust. They can't be diverted to other use. Uh, you're looking after your uh, the needs of your employees down the future uh, currently. Um, one of the burdens is that your, your employees are starting to gain their uh, employee retirement benefits on day one of employment, but by not pre-funding, you're actually leaving a lot of this burden to future taxpayers. And a key thing is it, it increases and improves your credit rating. Um, you are given a discount rate based on your unfunded liability. And when you begin to pre-fund your liability, that uh, increases your discount rate. And then our general rule of thumb is that when you increase your discount rate, that actually will decrease your overall unfunded liability by 10 to 12% for one-point improvement in your discount rate. Next slide, please. So uh, the investment option, next slide. We have partnered with um, Vanguard to uh, put together four distinct portfolios. And we base this on uh, the, the ratio of fixed income and equity. We've put four together because not only uh, do municipalities and districts and educational districts take into consideration the ultimate goal of significant earnings on investments, but there's also the risk, um, the investment risk tolerance of each agency. So that's why we have a conservative, a balanced and a growth portfolio. And it can mix, we mix that with the agency's interest in investment earnings and then their risk tolerance. We also provide a fixed income portfolio. We have uh, clients in two states that uh, they are prohibited from investing assets in equities. So we've put together a fixed in, fixed income portfolio. So uh, we've put these together and as you can see, we have 10-year and 30-year rates of return that are between um, 5 and 6.65% for the conservative, the balanced and the growth. Whereas the fixed income, as you can imagine, would be a lower expected rate of return. Next slide, please. So we have, the idea, the idea is that we put this all together, so it's a low-cost model um, that brings a highly diversified portfolio option and a legal trust option to our clients with, at a low cost. As I mentioned uh, before, the trust documents are in place, so there is no startup cost or legal cost to the agency. And then the rest of the cost in there is based on assets under management. So we've broken the fees down here where you'll see um, it's a blended rate for assets under management for PARs, the PARs fee, the Vanguard fee and the US Bank fee. And the, I'd like to point out the Vanguard fee, you'll see assets zero to 50 million. That's uh, on assets of all of our clients combined. So currently, our investment management fee is 26, uh, 2.6 basis points uh, because we have uh, over $250 million under management. So as earnings of all of our clients and contributions and more clients join our program, those fees go down. Uh, we started this program with Vanguard in 2014 where all of our clients were paying seven basis points for their investment management fees, and now they're currently paying 2.6 basis points. And that uh, fee is for, at any level, any client that they are participating regardless of assets. Next slide, please. So I just put together um, just to, instead of doing math in your head, I'm basing um, this example of a fee schedule on an initial contribution of $500,000. And then you'll see we attach the PARs trust administration fee, the Vanguard fee and the US Bank directed fee. So all in, and this would be assuming no income earnings or additional contribution. The fee would be $137.50 a month, which for an annual fee of six, $1,650. That's just to show you, so that's all in. We don't have any other costs. Um, next slide, please. So I covered um, essentially our program. Um, a couple of things just to um, highlight. We um, the program, essentially how you implement the program is we provide the documents to the city for review, which I did provide to Mr. Miller. Uh, the city council or alderman, in the case of Ansonia, would approve a resolution. Your treasurer would then execute the documents. Uh, the account would be set up and then funds could be uh, contributed into the uh, program. And uh, the question that sometimes people don't like to ask, but, so I just throw it out there. Uh, our program uh, does not have any minimum contribution requirements. You don't have uh, contribution requirements on an annual basis. You contribute when you contribute. You contribute as much as you, your agency wishes to contribute. And if an agency decides to leave our program, it is, the requirement is a 30-day written notice. Uh, there is no fee attached to that. Uh, there's no fee attached to that. So um, uh, it's an easy, join the program and if you choose to leave, uh, you would leave the program. So at this point, um, I'd welcome any questions that anybody might have. I know I've thrown a lot of information at you in a few minutes.
I have a question, but it's more for Kurt. Um, Kurt, what's, Kate mentioned the, you know, plans range anywhere between 15,000 and the 3 million on the initial uh, you know, buy-in, if you will. Do we have a projected figure on where we would fall within that?
Uh, we'd be closer to the 15,000 than the 3 million, that I could say. Um, but I, I think what would, for fiscal year 23, we'd, we would identify a specific amount in the budget. And then we would look to use a certain percentage of any surplus each year that may come up to be deposited into the account. So you know, 10% or something like that, a smaller amount. Uh, but again, as we talked about the last meeting, this is something that takes time to build up. Um, so we just need to be consistent with our deposits.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any questions for Kate or for Mr. Miller on this?
I just wanted to clarify one thing, Tom, if I could, really quick. I think Kate said this, but it was, it was about the, any, if we decided to leave the program anytime, Kate, then you said there was no penalty. Is that accurate?
There is no financial penalty. Um, we asked for a 30-days written notice, and I just have to qualify. The 30-days written notice would um, be to establish that your trusts, your funds are going into a different trust. And that's usually what takes the 30 days. Once your funds have been put into a trust, they have to go into a like trust. Um, they can't just go back into general fund. Also, one quick thing to point out um, is that if at some point you have assets in a trust, but you no longer have a retiree healthcare obligation. I do have a client in South Carolina that um, they have, they have a sunset on when they're done. Any funds remaining in the trust would revert back to your general fund once you have exhausted the requirement to provide benefits.
Thank you.
So if there's no other questions for Kate, Kate, thank you very much, as always.
Thank you.
Do any, does anyone have any questions about anything else I talked about tonight?
So Kurt, for the sake of clarity, both the alderman and the residents uh, listening, uh, this is really a great vehicle to control retirement costs for the city. And classically, retirement costs have been a pretty substantial challenge uh, in financial um, you know, the wait for the city to lift. So this vehicle allows us to better process that cost um, to be able to, of course, you know, divert funds, more funds into our important services and other uses and even back to the taxpayers ultimately at the end of the day.
Correct. This is something that uh, down the road, future boards of alderman will be very appreciative uh, that you took the time to set up. So I guess that's uh, that's all I have for tonight, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. All right. Moving on, our next topic is the city budget for fiscal year 2021, 2022. And before we dive into commentary on this, Sheila, I know, I think I saw Charlie Stowe on here. Leave, I'm not sure, I'm not sure if he's Laura's iPad. I thought he was or not, but you know, if he was going to join at this point.
Josh is here.
Tony, I'm gonna, I'm gonna get him on the uh, on the phone.
Okay. Thank you, Sheila.
Yep.
Josh who?
Josh Stewart.
Yeah, Josh who?
Josh who?
That guy that calls himself the president of this board.
Welcome aboard, Mr. Stewart.
Hey, how you doing? Thank you.
Good. I'm gonna keep the reins just momentarily for the budget, if you don't mind, and then uh, I'll give you that opportunity to uh, you know, take ownership back or control back.
No, carry on.
Hey, Charlie. We're uh, okay, I have Charlie on the line, guys.
Okay. Thanks, Sheila. So just, just to lead into the, you know, the budget conversation, you know, I just wanted to quickly extend, you know, a thank you to everyone involved in the budget process. It's not easy. You know, it's generally a worthless task. Uh, you know, just again, just a couple of the folks to thank, you know, the mayor, all the department heads, you know, especially members of the finance team, Kurt, Rich, Kim, I know you guys have a lot of uh, blood, sweat and tears into this, into this budget. Uh, you know, members of boat, members of the Alderman Finance Committee, thank you guys, thank you everybody. You know, the past year, it's been incredibly hard on all of us, you know, and the last thing we, any of us need as taxpayers is a tax increase or even a reduction in city services. You know, this budget does not propose a tax increase, does not decrease any city services, vital city services that, you know, we need. So it provides also a continued capital investment, which is important for the city's, you know, midterm and long-term plan. Um, it's something, you know, I feel very strongly about, something I'm, I'm supportive of, and uh, you know, I hope you guys are too. So with that, um, I guess we'll, we'll pause. Is there any discussion on the budget before we move into any of the, you know, motions for approval?
I can start it off, Tom, if I may.
Uh, you spoke first. Go ahead, Mr. Phipps.
Okay. Listen, um, my first question is where's the budget? All we got was the, looked like summary pages of the budget, and we have always been accustomed to, at least during my uh, recognition of the aldermen and budgets, you know, we got the whole budget, and we don't have it this year. I am very confused as to what we're expected to do. You know, we've got a lot of iterations going down the road when it was being built, but we don't have the budget that's being presented tonight that we're gonna have to live with.
But I know the summarized version, I think, was supplied just to, you know, keep the pages down. The detailed version is available. I know it was published online. Um, Kurt, I know we do have it. We could distribute it, you know, if folks want or.
It's been online for two months.
Correct. Okay.
Just so you know.
I have, I have not seen the finished budget online.
There is no, I mean, there.
Well, what are we gonna be asked to vote on tonight, then?
The budget that's been up online, uh, there were no changes, or there were no recommended changes made by boat, and there were no recommended changes made by uh, the Alderman Finance Subcommittee. So what's been up is, is the budget, so there's been no change.
Well, I don't think that's acceptable. Us who were not privileged to the inner workings of the finance committee and um, we don't know what the final budget is. We don't see it in writing as part of the document that will be filed uh, with uh, Trish Bruder and when it gets filed. We don't have a budget in the column that says Board of Aldermen. There's nothing there.
Oh, you're looking at a different document because uh, it's been up online and it's, and we've seen it and we went over it. I guess I'm a little confused as to your question.
Yeah, I've seen it too, Josh. Uh, I've seen all the iterations. I took the uh, the Excel spreadsheet that was a little more informative and, and that enabled me to copy it, of course, because it's frozen for purposes, and then do a little analysis of changes and what jumped out at me. But there's no finished document that I can find.
That's online.
Yeah, it's, it's online, Bill.
It should be attached tonight. It should be referenced tonight and available tonight, not online from two months ago. Because I had questions about that original budget. And I had thought that when we, uh, is coming to the Board of Aldermen from boat, that we would get a chance to chew over some of these questions that heretofore had not been addressed. And can't do it because I can't see it. Unless I have to go online. Maybe I have to log out and, and go online and look at it.
You don't have to log out. You don't have to log out. You could just go online.
Sheila, I'm talking to uh, Josh, please.
Oh, sorry. I thought you were talking to me.
But uh, you know, we're, we're way out of whack on this thing. We haven't uh, well, we haven't gone by the charter, but that's the drum I've been beating for years and nobody hears it but me, so um, there's no budget there to look at except the summary sheet. It looks nice. Yeah, I mean, hell, no tax increase is nice and throw a little bit in the kitty, that's nice, but.
Yeah, that's, that's the, Bill, that's the, that's the summarized portion of, of the detail that's online. So uh, do we wanna, do you have your questions prepared now? Do you wanna run through them?
Well, I would, thought it would have been done in a um, um, you know, a work session or so, but I mean, I can sum, I don't have them written down, but I could probably throw them out there and, you know, uh, things that I picked up that should have been challenged and I hadn't heard challenged. And um, you know, uh, going to the finance department, uh, you know, 163% increase in wages. Boy, that, that, you know, that needs to be chewed on a little bit as far as I'm concerned. That's a hell of a jump. And um, there's another item on the finance.
Hold on, Bill, hold on. Wait, Mr. Miller, can you address that? Because.
Well, let me, let me do, uh, the finance, I got one more. I think it's an error. There was a $400 uh, travel item that started out and was 400, and all of a sudden it became 5,400. Is that what's in the finished budget?
Well, I can, I can address both of those, Alderman Phipps. First, the biggest driver of the increase in salary, number one, is my hiring. So that money needed to be added to the budget. And secondly, the transition of the employee from the library over to the Finance Department, both things that were approved by the Board of Alderman. Also, the increase in the travel budget is contractual. In my contract, again, that was approved by the Alderman, there is money available for me to attend specific conferences, GFOA and things like that, so money needs to be put aside for those. So again, these are things that were discussed and approved by the Board of Alderman in advance.
The Board of Alderman?
You voted on my contract, so.
That $5,000 is for you to.
You voted on my contract. It's in the contract, yeah.
Okay, I believe it. I, I know we were part of talking about the contract, but not talking out of school. We did, when we were talking about the contract and how we were gonna be able to afford it, and, and, and I don't think we were true to our discussions on where, how we were gonna afford it. Because Bradshaw left, that was gonna be part of it. Richie was gonna be finally retiring. That was gonna be part of the justification of your contract, and it don't look like those things were done.
Well, that, that's not on me.
That's not on you? No, sir, it is not indeed. It's on us, but we haven't had a chance to even talk about it because it's not even there.
But again, you're targeting one specific area of the budget, and you're not looking at the budget as a whole. And we need to break away from just looking at specific items and look at the budget as a global entity, and how all the pieces of the budget fit together. And you find efficiencies in one area that may raise costs that provide tremendous savings in other areas. So just to go through and cherry pick lines and base that on an increase or a large increase, a large percentage increase, excuse me, is not the way to look at it. You have to look at the overall budget itself and how all the pieces fit together. The other thing you need to keep in mind is the budget document is drastically different than it had been in the past. We reclassified a lot of the expenses to put it in a format that's much easier to read by the residents. In the past, you had debt service and employee benefits and utilities in the exact same line. And that makes it challenging for anyone to truly track or analyze what the data is telling you. So we went through the process of splitting those out. So utilities are now in their own column. Employee benefits are in their own department, debt service and so on and so forth. So some of the numbers are going to be skewed simply because of that. As I said, the salary line is very specific to decisions that were made by this board, so it really should not be a surprise that there is a, a large percentage increase in that number.
Yeah, well, it's, it was something that I felt should be addressed, about $300,000 or something. I forget now because I don't have it right in front of me, but it was a very large sum of money, and I don't see where it was addressed by anybody in the deliberation process from boat all the way up through tonight. Actually, there was no official deliberation process that I'm aware of in the Board of Alderman. It looked like it was a combined effort with boat. And that leaves six or seven of us out in the cold where we gotta embarrass ourselves tonight asking questions that are somewhat embarrassing, but I personally feel they have to be asked.
I, I don't think asking questions is embarrassing, Alderman Phipps. If you have questions, I'm happy to answer them.
They're not so much at you, Mr. Miller, but they're at ourselves, I think.
Oh, I don't, I don't, I don't take this as a personal offense.
No, in fact, I, I sort of like your approach to things, but getting there had me a little disturbed, but so I'm venting.
I don't, again, I don't, I don't take any personal offense to it.
Yeah, no, I, I understood the, the percentage, but I felt comfortable if I could during the course of the year, have a budget in front of me that is official by the department, so we can see what they have, what they're doing. And right now, if I go to the one online, that'll probably disappear, and it won't be anywhere available because it's not attached to this resolution tonight.
Well, that's, I, I'm gonna push back a little on that. That won't be the case because we're making changes to the Finance Department section of the website, so all this information can be up there. So we are more transparent. Again, the whole reason that we changed the document to look the way that it is is so that the average resident could take a look at it, who may not be a financial person, who may not understand municipal financing, to take a look at this and understand some of the basics of what's going on. Because the better the residents are informed, the easier the process is for all of us. I understand a, a topic like OPED Trust, that's a very, very challenging, very cumbersome process that we have to go through. But the budget should not be that. The budget should be simple. It should be easy to understand. Residents should be able to scan quickly through and ask or understand where their money is being spent and be able to understand that without a lot of work and effort. So I, there's absolutely no reason that this budget would be hidden, would be taken down. To be honest with the Finance Department, we're, we're very proud of the document that we have put together. It's not perfect, no document is, but we are very proud of the initial steps we've taken to, to kind of change the process and the way Antonia does its budget.
And if I may, Mr. Phipps, there's, there's, I was looking at some of the other information too, just to kind of look at, you know, some of those percentages, probably the same way you were. And I found the, you know, some of the finance information for actuals as well as budget, you know, back to 2016, that was still online. I was able to extract and pull those down and use those for the analysis that I was performing. So that information is, is still out there on the Finance webpage.
Oh, yeah, the, the budget said that we used to get, used to be available, and then, well, anyway, I'm beating a dead horse here, I think, so.
I mean, I can send the budget to all the Alderman right now, if you'd like, Alderman Phipps.
I'm sorry, I didn't catch that, Kurt.
I, I can send the budget to all of the Alderman right now. Again, we didn't want to provide the full document for these conversations because when we, when I provided the full document the last time, there were some issues about it being able to view, so on and so forth. So we wanted to have just the summary pages, the specifics, so you folks could vote. And again, it would not be a cumbersome process for you, but I can provide that document for you without any problem.
Yeah, I mean, we've done it. I've seen them three times now, so it's not a problem. But then again, anyway, all right, it's a, it's a huge deviation from what has been done in the past, and that had me a little concerned, uneasy. I don't argue with the bottom line. I, I guess I'm complaining and showing concern about how we got it there and how deviations are being made. And we're worried about protecting home rule from the state. Sometimes I'm getting word that we gotta protect home rule for ourselves. And.
No, I, I think.
We've got a charter out there that we continually violate. It's like it's not even there, and that can be dangerous. So I put it out on the table for people to think about. I'm one man talking and I'm finished, so thank you for bearing with me.
No, no, not, and you know what, Alderman Phipps, you know, Kim spends a lot of time creating these reports that you now see in your package each month, where we show the revenue side, now the, excuse me, the expense side, now the revenue side as well as the check run. So once the new budget season starts, all of this will match. So you will be able to look at the document that we've created and the document that Kim produces each month and be able to kind of compare to give you a very strong ideas as to where the city stands financially. Again, we're trying to be as transparent as we possibly can. Feedback is great. I, you know, I got a lot of feedback from the members of boat, and there'll be some changes after July 1st based on what they have asked for. So again, this is, you know, it's an organic document. It's growing, it's changing, and it's gonna be based on what you folks are looking for. That's what we're gonna ultimately provide for the city.
In fact, I believe, Kurt, either when you interviewed with Gene Dresdahl on Valley Indy or, or something public that I heard you say that the budget is a living document right now, and it's, and it's pretty tough to catch on to because you don't know what Hartford's gonna do for us or to us. Is it still, I mean, those numbers could change, or will that be done through a boat kind of a thing and general fund?
You know, the revenue numbers that we put in there, I think, were on the conservative side. If you look at the numbers, excuse me, that the governor put out, and then the numbers that were followed up just in the last two weeks by the legislature, you know, both are never 100% correct. What we finally get is, is generally a combination of the two, but what we did was we budgeted very conservatively. As an example, the distressed municipality money, which both the governor, is in the governor's budget as well as the legislature's, at least recommendations, we're using about 55% of that money, so we have 45%. We'll, we'll call it flexible, depending on changes that make. We used the City of Antonia's Tier One for the payments and lieu taxes, the pilot money. So we kept the initial amount that the city has always received in the past, which is about $67,000, give or take, not the new number that just came out for Tier Ones, which is 217,000. So if anything, we erred on the side of caution and we're more conservative. I would rather, you know, that, you know, Kim, myself and Rich are coming to you guys in August or September and saying, hey, we under budgeted our revenue line by, and make this up, 110,000. We have this extra money. Is there anything that the Alderman would like to consider doing with that money? Or is there a special project or something like that? So I'd rather be having those conversations with you as opposed to saying, hey, we budgeted $1,000 and we only got 100. And now we have to make cuts and things. So I think we're very much on the conservative side. And, you know, Rich is, is very conservative. He calls himself conservative. Rich, we're kind of a yin and yang. We balance, you know, we kind of balance each other out, which is really good. And so I, I think our revenue numbers with the state of Connecticut are in a good place.
All right, very good then. We're not even talking about the pot of gold that we're getting from the feds, I guess.
Well, that's, that, you know, that's another one, and we've kind of gone back and forth. None of that money is in this budget whatsoever. You know, I've seen reports that the city itself, the city, not counting the Board of Ed, is gonna receive 5.4 million. We reached out to Congresswoman Delora's office, Senator Murphy's office. Sheila has strong relationships with both of those offices. They told us that we're gonna receive about 1.8 million. So again, you know, we didn't want to program any of that money until we received it, and we also understand where all the true restrictions are to that money.
I understand, very true way of going at it.
That's sitting there. So just one other thing, I want to throw a plug to our, our tax collector's office. I believe they're both on today. You know, you can see the reports. They have just steadily improved month over month, year over year, over the last couple of years. Those two are knocking the ball out of the ballpark. So that's gonna be a big help when you can slowly kick up your collection rate, but more importantly, be able to hit those numbers.
Right.
Again, that's, that's a big driver as well.
Okay.
And team should take a bow for that, for sure.
Yeah, they're doing a great job.
Nice job.
Thank you, sir.
Oh, you're very welcome. Anytime.
Diane, you had a question?
Yeah, no, it's not a question. It's just a statement. And, and in all fairness to Bill, I, I understand where he's coming from because it is a change of process of how we normally have done it in the past. As a matter of fact, I had that concern, Bill. I called Kurt, and I asked Kurt, where was the other part of the budget? I thought maybe I had missed an email or I had missed something, and he explained, as he explained tonight to me. Now, I did have the opportunity to look at the budget and to go over the line items. I had questions, as you had questions, Bill, about the salary, and we talked about the, the salary with the, in the Finance Department. I had a couple other little things that I saw, so I was able to review those line items. But I will say that I feel comfortable that the work that was done, that things had been fixed. I was very concerned about the library.
A lot of people were.
Right. And I see now that they fixed that library budget, you know, that now there's not an issue with the library. But, but yeah, but so, so, you know, I understand where you're coming from regarding, but I think it's mainly because that process changed from the way we normally have, have done it. But anyway, just wanted to make that statement.
Thank you, Diane. Are there any other questions or commentary? No? Okay.
And, and I guess acting president, I don't know what we call you now that Josh is back, but, you know, any Alderman that has questions or comments, I mean, please don't hesitate to reach out, give me a call, send me an email. We can meet. You can come into the office. I can stop by your houses. I can let you buy me a cup of coffee. And I'd be more than happy to answer any question, break down any number, review anything that you have. I mean, I work for you folks, so I'm happy to provide as much information as I possibly can to all of you.
Yeah, I believe he's blocked my number. I've called him so many times, so.
Yeah, like six times in the last two days, but I'm not counting.
Can I just comment, Tony?
What's that, Josh?
I'm gonna, I'm still deferring to you in this portion, but I want to make a, a quick comment. I made this, a little bit of this comment during the public hearing, but, you know, change is good when it, when it makes things better, and I think the process is, is, is better, the communication is, is better. You know, Kurt has been, in his team have been turning, you know, water into wine, I think, and I, I feel like this process has gotten tighter and that, you know, I feel like of all the budgets I've seen, you know, over the years, like I feel like I have the most confidence in this one being true and accurate, and we had set, we had half of the Alderman on there. We purposely left that space in between the public hearing and now for you guys to ask questions, to, to reach out. And I know, I know I hammered, you know, Kurt with questions as well, and anything we've asked, he's, he's answered, you know, truthfully. And personally, I appreciate the fact that the, you know, it's treated as a living document. It's not something we're gonna hand fistily pretend that we're going to, to, you know, hit exactly on there. But if I, if I'm not incorrect, the numbers we're looking at are that 59,18972, which is the total, which is the revenue and the expenditure and mill rate, 3780, and those haven't changed with the nine, I think 98% collection rate. And that's literally all we're, we're looking at now because we're not going to, we didn't do it last year, and, and I don't think there's any intention of digging into departments at this point again. But with that, I just turn it back to Tony.
All right, now that Josh stole all my thunder just about, he had to reclaim his, his awesomeness. But all right, so, you know, is there a motion to accept the fiscal year 2021, 2022 proposed budget as a whole and forego accepting each individual department's budgets? Now, before there's a motion on that, I just want to say, you know, we're going to run through and approve the expenses in total, the revenues in total, the total budget as presented, and the, you know, setting the mill rate as well. So there's a couple other motions individually that are gonna follow, but this first motion is to just forego approving each department's budget and doing it as a whole. Is there a motion for that? Is that Yalman?
Don't move.
All right, Cassetti, is there a second for that?
Yalman.
Yalman. All in favor?
All right.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carried. Okay. All right. Number two.
Can I just make one brief comment? I just, I, I meant to say it before, and I just, I just wanted to say, I wanted to thank everybody for the hard work on this budget. But first and foremost, I wanted to say is that I think, you know, no budget is ever perfect. It's, I think it's, you know, sort of illustrated. It's a living document. It's kind of moving at all times. But I think this does a, a great job in setting the priorities of not only this administration, but of this board, and makes a document that is much more user-friendly, much more accessible, hopefully, to the public in the very near future when that document is out there for the public to see. But I can say, just, you know, from me seeing the document, I think it's much more user-friendly, much more readable. And certainly, it's a change year over, you know, from last year. But I just found it, you know, so much more convenient, so much easier to navigate and be able to understand where the tax dollars are going. So I just want to say thank you to the finance team, and just leave the comments there.
Thanks, Joe. Okay, moving in for the revenue line. Is there a motion to approve the proposed revenues for the fiscal year 2021, 2022 budget as 59,189,972? 2022 budget as 59,180,972?
So moved, Yalman.
Second. Second by Cassetti. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carried. All right, moving for the expense portion. Is there a motion to approve the proposed expenses for the fiscal year 2021, 2022 budget as 59,180,972?
Moved.
Moved.
Motion by Rivers. Second.
Yalman.
Yalman. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Carried. Thank you. Number four, this is the budget as a whole. Is there a motion to approve the city of Ansonia fiscal year 2021, 2022 budget in the amount of 59,180,972 as presented tonight?
So moved.
Motion by Yalman, second.
Rivers.
Rivers, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you. Lastly, is there a motion to set the city of Ansonia fiscal year 2021, 2022 mill rate at 37.80 mills at a collection rate of 98%?
For motion, move.
Motion by Yalman, second.
Second.
Second by Char. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carried.
I have a question.
Sorry, Trish, go ahead.
Is alderman still with us yet?
Yeah, he voted aye twice.
He is here. Okay. Just want to make sure Spigarello did not arrive Blackwell.
Okay.
Want to talk?
That's good. All right. I just want to make sure I get the count right. Thank you.
Thank you, Trish. All right. Ladies and gentlemen of the board, it's been a pleasure, uh, filling in for my esteemed colleague, Mr. Stewart. Mr. Stewart, I am going to turn the reins back over to you. It's been a pleasure.
Tony, I just want to thank you for, A, stepping in, but two, for your leadership during the budget process. It was like having a second CFO, CFO junior, I guess. And, uh, so we, we appreciate that. And I, I think the board has confidence in you, uh, in your financial wherewithal and also your conversations with Kurt. So I do appreciate that. And also that to those seven aldermen that were on the finance committee, thanks again.
Yep, thank you.
I have to ask, uh, did you make a cheesy Jeopardy joke when you started?
No, I should have. I, I missed the opportunity. It felt, it felt wrong, but I wanted to.
I figured it was like, you know, Jeopardy's looking for a host and they're trying people out, but I don't know. By the end of this meeting, we may just go back to you. We'll see.
Josh, on behalf of myself and the, you know, the, the other aldermen and all older women here, um, thanks for coming back. We thought we were going to be stuck with Tony and it was, it was getting rough in here.
But listen, Hugh Jackman, come on.
Unbeknownst to you, I've created a schedule. We're going to try out someone different every month. And, uh, so you may be next. All right.
I know I need to be absent.
All right. So that's, uh, so we up to committee reports? A little disheveled, so. Finance committee.
Motion to pay all bills if found correct.
Second.
Motion by Mamon, second by Rivers. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? All right, motion passes. Do we have any other committee reports? I know Joe, um, the, the regional school committee.
Yep, I got two reports actually, Mr. President. Temporary regional school study, uh, we have had two meetings since our last meeting. We met with our contractor. Contractor is coming back again for the next meeting to get us some more definitive answers on some of the significant financial questions we had. That meeting is scheduled for May 25th at 7:30 via Zoom. I encourage all of you to come out. If you have the opportunity to, to try to get the better understanding of what the finances would look like. We're talking about basically the equalization between the two communities and sort of what the financial impact would be and things and things of that nature. So it's, it's a little, uh, little dense, a little dry, but it's certainly impactful. So I would encourage everybody to come out. Secondarily, we did have an ordinance meeting where we talked about a couple of different things, including, uh, you know, some possible adjustments with regards to exploring a cat ordinance, feral cats, and also discussing noise ordinances, particularly with loud vehicles and things like that. So those are ongoing. Nothing's been put in writing. We do have another meeting scheduled. I think it's May, May 20th at seven o'clock, if I'm not mistaken. Diane, correct me if I'm wrong. Uh, but I think that's right. We set that schedule that night. So I encourage everybody to come out there, subcommittee meeting, if you're interested in the subject matter. We'll be talking about both of those matters as well.
I have a, um, a question, partner. Will we have, will we have that cat ordinance in place to vote on by the next meeting?
That I don't know. That's going to be up to, we're going to have to have that conversation. I know Attorney Marini was putting together some language based on, uh, one of the state statutes. We'll probably address that. And we'll have that conversation at the ordinance meeting.
So yeah, so I do have a draft ready for your next meeting. So the question is whether or not at your next meeting, there's a referral to the full board of aldermen.
Okay. So if I happen to come there to that meeting, um,
We'll use the mute button. We'll use the mute button. But other than that, yeah. I could send copies of the draft also to the alderman for review this week. So you could take a look at where it is, you know, where it stands. But basically, you know, we talked about, um, the idea of creating a penalty that is enforceable at the same time, not over committing the city to do something that it doesn't have the resources or the funds to do, i.e. rounding up feral cats. And I do believe. What's that?
John, Genie, Genie was involved in that conversation.
I think that we're going to want to talk to Genie about that draft. And, and that's how I sort of see the next meeting going is sort of talking about it with her, getting her input. But again, you know, I'm very cognizant as to what our limitations are. We certainly don't want to create something that creates this requirement that Genie can't keep up with. But my reading of the state law is that we don't need to, that we could have enforcement power. We limit our obligations. So I'm, I'm pretty comfortable. So I'll share the draft and also talk to Genie to be at that meeting, at that next meeting, so we could have a.
And just, just so you know, I did, I did speak to Genie and to Chief Cota about both of those ordinances, both, uh, after the meeting. Made them aware of the fact that when we did have a draft, they would be invited so, for their input. So we'll both make sure of that.
All right. Uh, any other committee reports from the aldermen? Going once, twice. All right, perfect. All right, we'll move on to the municipal reports of boat recommendations. Do we have a motion to approve the boat recommendations and controller approvals?
Motion.
May 10th, the meeting. Motion by Mamon, second by Cassetti. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Stained. All right, motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Also under municipal, we have the land use report for April. Motion to. Wish to accept by Yalman, second. By Cassetti, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? All right, motion passes unanimously. Thank you. And I have the revenue here somewhere, but I moved it somewhere. Usually like to comment on the revenue for land use department, but I don't have that on me. So, um, all right, moving on. We have the tax collector report and request refunds. We actually have, uh, I asked Johanna to be here tonight. And she's been patiently waiting through all this other stuff. We actually have four items. Um, we have the tax collector report. And then there were three, uh, other reports in here. I, I asked her to be here in case there were any questions. But you received all that stuff in your packet. So first up, we have a motion to accept the April tax collector report and pay the April 2021 refunds in the amount of 11,788.45 if found to be correct.
Make that motion.
Motion by Mamon, second by Rivers. All in favor? Any opposed? Abstaining. Right, motion passes. All right, the next one is, uh, the suspense report dated November 2020 in the amount of 449,49487. Actually, Johanna, could you just speak, um, generally to these three reports we received?
Uh, sure. The, can everyone hear me?
Yep.
Okay. So the, we'll start off with the suspense report. It's, um, a yearly report that I'm required by statute to submit, uh, usually by the end of the fiscal year. And what it does is it, it just places, it, it's really not an impact with the tax office. It's more, it might be more of an impact in the finance department. What it does is just suspends it, um, for budget purposes, but it's still, it's still deemed collectible. So if anyone, you know, decides to come in and want to get their taxes current, those suspended accounts are still collectible and will be collected within the 15-year limitation. So that, again, that would be a yearly report. The write-off reports, those would probably happen every so often. As, 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 when they come in, um, like you told off tax sale that, you know, the city sometimes, for example, the city is, is looking to claim ownership on a piece of property. I'll in fact go through the process of doing so. And with those back taxes, they have to be written off because we, uh, claim, we get ownership, you know, free from all encumbrances. So, um, you know, there were, there were, it's also something for me to do, to, to clean up the system. These that were requested, um, are very old bills. There's no impact to the, to the current grand list or the current budget. So this is anything prior to the grand list of 2019. The, the, uh, request for write-off for refunds, that's just really just to clean up the system and that should really be done on a, on a yearly basis. Just so that way our system is not reflecting any credits that are no longer can be claimed by statute. Anything prior to three years cannot be claimed and it goes directly to the general fund, to the city's account.
So Johanna, it's Tony, just, just for clarification. So when we're saying it's a write-off, it's not, like you said, it's not a, a hit on the budget or anything like that. Or, you know, uh, you know, a deduction from the grand list itself. This is really just marking it as uncollectible. And really it's, it's kind of more of a, a system maintenance per se where we're not, you know, as an example, we're not chasing taxes on, you know, property on Beaver Street or Holbrook or Hughes. I'm just, you know, looking at this list for the 289,000. We're not, um, chasing these per se because for whatever reason they are deemed uncollectible. Is that a fair assessment?
That's correct. That's absolutely correct. Yeah.
Okay. All right. Thanks.
All right. Um, and so any other que, any questions from the alderman on these, on, on that explanation?
Yeah, but this is just clarification further, Joanna. So that means the suspense ones, even though there is suspense, I, I heard you say you still could go after collection for those then, right?
Absolutely. That is correct.
Okay.
Okay. And, um, on the, um, the write-offs, um, the only time that you will have one of them, um, well, I'm, I'm not sure, but if, um, the city takes ownership of the property, that's the only time that you'll have that?
No, that, that was just one example. And, um, for any tax sale that I, that I, um, go through, it's depending on the successful bidder, depending on the bid, you know, for the most part, it's our goal that, you know, the bids are, are, are more than what we're asking for, um, or, or, you know, the bids are what we're asking for and nothing lower. If I have, I have a few accounts that are so old that have accrued so much taxes that holding a tax sale, it's just, there's no interest in, in, in paying that kind of money for a piece of property that might be just in, in, in a bad condition. So it's cases like that as well, that would, we would, we would honor a low bid and then the prior taxes would have to be written off.
Okay. I got you. I understand now. I got.
Yeah, when, when the taxes, you know, at that point in Chicago that have accumulated, they exceed the fair market value.
Right, right, right.
All right. So let's move on then to these. So we, we have a motion to approve the suspense report. That's the November 2020, and I already read the amount, which was 449,49487.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Mamon, second by Rivers. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Stained. All right, motion passes unanimously. Uh, the third item is the write-off list, uh, August 2020, amount of 289, 87756.
Motion.
Motion by Rivers, second by Mamon. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes unanimously. And, uh, the last one is the write-off list of refund dated, uh, August 2020 in the amount of, minus 89,334 and 12 cents.
Motion.
Motion by Rivers.
Second.
Second by Cassetti. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Stained. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, guys. Thank you, Johanna. You're up in a couple of minutes, uh, for something else. You may want to hang around. But thank you for, for your, um, for your answers and your work in that office.
I actually just have a question. Do you have, um, a write-off report for June 2020 of 13329?
Yeah, Josh, it's in the, um.
That number sounds familiar.
Yeah, it's in the packet.
Yes. That is, but it doesn't say 13329?
Yep. Yeah.
It says August though, not June.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm, okay.
Do I need to do that one as well?
Please.
Yep. Okay. So, um, so seeking a motion for the, um, write-off list for August 2020 in the amount of 133.29.
Hold on one second. Wait, what, what report number is that in the package? I don't recall seeing that either. Sorry.
Yeah, it's, it's in between. It was, um.
It was, I printed them all together and it is in the middle.
There was two for August 2020. One was the minus 89 and one was for the, uh, 13329.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You might have thought.
There it is. It is, it is in report number two, if anybody is looking for that. I, I did not see that originally. So, okay.
So do we have a motion on that one? I can't, I.
So moved.
Stroman, second by.
Second.
Second by Rivers. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Stained. All right, motion passes unanimously. Thanks again. All right, uh, accidents and claims. We have one claim, uh, number 05211006, Walmart slash Margarita Valverde versus City of Ansonia.
Motion referred to council.
Motion by Yalman.
Second.
Second by Cassetti. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Yes. Oh, discussion. Yeah, go ahead.
I just had a question of why is this with the city of Ansonia if it's, it looks like it's with the state?
I, the same question.
Me too. Why is it even with the city?
We're, we're referring this to corporation counsel, but we can ask him if he's.
So I, this is just incoming, so I'm going to have a chance to review. And obviously if the claims are not directed. So I, this is just incoming, so I'm going to have a chance to review. And obviously, if the claims are not directed to the city, that's great. If they're incorrectly attributed to the city, you know, we'll, we'll take appropriate action. Um, but you know, this batch is just incoming, so it's going to be under review this week. And we'll make an appropriate decision whether to send it to insurance for defense or, or possibly, you know, maybe it's something we're not even involved in, but this did come into the clerk's office.
Oh. Okay.
We make sure, you know, in the interest of transparency, if any claim comes in of any sort in the clerk's office, I make sure that it goes to you first, you know, in terms of screening, so you see it before we do anything. Uh, just for the sake of knowing what's going on. So I, I don't have much of a filter there. You know, you're going to see everything that comes in.
No problem. Okay, thank you.
So with that, we're still going to kick it to you, John. We have, do we have the, the, uh, motion in the second? Uh, Trish, forget.
Yeah, we did, I think.
Alright, all in favor?
Yes, you do.
Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, uh, motion passes. Let's see, we have, uh, one communication from, uh, Johanna, the tax collector. And I can read this. This was communication number one. Uh, requesting approval from the Board of Aldermen to charge, my eyes is, um, to charge an administrative fee of twenty dollars to any taxpayer looking to receive an immediate release for the Department of Motor Vehicle effective Ju, July first, twenty twenty-one. Our intent is to encourage taxpayers to make payment by the deadline. In addition to recouping the fees charged to the city to have access to the DMV database for return payment fees and monthly rental fees for credit card devices. I'd like to request this to be placed on the agenda for the monthly, uh, Alderman meeting. Uh, so I can have ample time to include a notification to Ansonia taxpayers if approved for the July billing. Any comments, questions?
Yeah, I, I do. I have a, um, um, a question. Um, I understand that, that when they want a, um, immediate, um, release, right? You have to pull somebody off a job that they're already doing to do that.
That is correct.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, I, I would have to say that, um, on an average, we're doing that about a dozen a day of motor vehicle releases over the phone or in person. You know, it, it's always our goal to, to get the word out there, to just send a message that, you know, it's, it's very imperative to pay your taxes on time. And, and I mean, we don't want taxpayers to pay interest. We don't want them to pay penalties. We don't want to do further action. So, you know, a little encouragement for, for DMV is, I, I, I deem it necessary. Um, you know, we, we do have taxpayers letting us know right off the, the bat that, you know, they rather wait the two years when they're due for renewal of their registration to pay their taxes. And, and it, it just hurts them more to do that. You know, they're, they're team related interest at one point five percent. That's a lot of money after two years. And we're just trying to encourage them to, like, listen, we're, we're, we're reviewing your accounts individually before we proceed with further action, you know? Pay your taxes on time. And then that'll, that'll allow us to, to not be, um, taken away from our duty.
Yeah, so.
To do those immediate releases.
I have a question for you. Is there a way to get a notice out to the residents? Because I know we're looking to start this July first, so maybe just a notice to let people know effective July first. And then hopefully they'll start getting them done ahead of time.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely. That would be my number one goal, posting it on the website, on the Facebook page, on the New Haven Register, the Valley Indy. And, um, potentially even holding off probably towards, um, the, uh, the January installment, if need be. I want the word out there first, so that way they know, you know, this is what we're doing before we actually do it.
Perfect, thank you.
Don't we send postcards out for July, uh, vehicle taxes? We still do that?
For, uh, for July installments is the actual bill, uh, that we send out.
So with that, can we, you know, have a, have a leaflet or something tucked in with that to say, hey, you know, effective seven-one, there's a bill, because that will effectively cover everybody that we need? Um, you know, that's receiving a tax bill?
Absolutely, yes.
I, I have a second question too. So not so much as around, you know, the, you know, trying to incentivize, you know, folks to pay their taxes on time, which they should be doing. You, you know, what, what is the extra cost? So, you know, just in terms of time, how long does a release take? So you mentioned you're, you're pulling somebody away from a window to do this task. Is this a thirty-second thing? Is this, you know, a, a six-minute thing? Like, what, what is the actual cost to the city? You know, when you're doing this?
Um, well, um, with the DMV and their, you know, um, their system, it, you're logged in a frequent, you're logged in, you log in and then you're logged off without use very frequently. So, you know, a minute or so, it's a, to gain access again and into the database, uh, going from that database to the account record, um, it's to enter the specific numbers that need to be entered into the database. And then, you know, clicking, clicking the, the okay button.
Okay. So.
This is going to sound a little funny. Hi, Joan.
Hi.
I'm going to thank you for doing your job. You do a great job. A lot of people don't realize that the, the tap of the money that comes through the city goes right through your office. I want to thank you for going after every penny that you can get for the city. You're doing a great job, you and your assistants.
Thank you. We appreciate that. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm, I'm fully in favor of this. Diane, did you have a question? Sorry, anyone?
I had one question, but go, go ahead, Diane.
No, but I was going to say, but then I think you also said that there was some additional cost to us as well that you're trying to cover too, right?
Yeah.
Just the time that you're putting in, because it may not be as time-consuming. But there's some additional cost that you're trying to cover as well?
Yeah, the actual cost for the, um, the MV database is, uh, two hundred and fifty dollars a year. We would also like to recoup any return payments that we get, any payment that comes back as insufficient funds or account closed. Um, the, the bank charges the city twenty-five dollars for that, um, that charge back. And by statute, I can only cha, uh, charge to the taxpayer twenty dollars. So we'll be recouping that five-dollar difference. And then, uh, I am eager to get credit card devices into the system. Our taxpayers have been requesting this for many, 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 many years. And, um, unfortunately, there are some fees uh, equalling out to about forty dollars a month to the city, uh, that we would, we would like to recoup as well.
Thank you, Derek.
Any other, uh, questions or comments on this item?
One quick question, Josh. Johanna, thank you, uh, for all that you're doing. But, um, and I just want to clarify one thing is that you're asking for this with regards to the immediate release for the DMV. I mean, these releases, you guys process these in due course anyway. But this is when someone comes in and wants, needs to register their car and they're looking to stand in front of you until the release is done, because they had to go to the DMV to go register their car, right?
Yes, that is correct. It's, it's only for those cases. We wouldn't dare want to charge everyone for this, because not everyone is looking for that immediate release when they're making payments for their taxes. Yes. It's only for those that are looking for that release right away, because they're at the dealership and they want to get their car out of the parking lot, you know? So it, it's only for those.
On demand.
Intentions, yeah.
Yeah, on demand.
In, in a point of clarity, so Johanna, when they upgraded the DMV system, you know, those releases do happen a lot faster than they used to. I'm not, I'm not talking about the immediate ones, but if you hypothetically, if you pay and just let it go, it'll fall off probably overnight or something like that. But these, again, are the ones you're looking for. Immediate releases, again, as Joe said, standing right in your face, they want them right done and, you know, done right then and there.
Right, right.
Okay. I, I like, I like this. I'm, I'm in favor of this.
Absolutely.
You pay for convenience.
Yep.
Yep.
Alright, so let's move.
Motion to accept the adoption of the, uh, twenty-dollar, uh, administrative fee for the immediate DMV release as noted by the tax collector.
Motion by Mamon.
Second.
Second by.
Can I just, can I just say, Tony, and I know you, you meant to say it's effective July first, twenty twenty-one, right?
Effective seven-one. Thank you, Joe. Twice you caught me tonight on the dates, damn it.
Twice.
All in favor?
That's why I'm sticking with Josh.
Yeah. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you again, Johanna.
Thanks, Charlie.
Thank you.
Get some heavy lifting tonight. Thank you again for coming.
Good.
Thank you very much.
Alright, um, next up, we have, uh, one resignation from Henry, uh, Bolads from the W, uh, PCA and the Zoning Board of Appeals.
Motion to accept. Send them a nice letter of thanks.
Uh, motion by Cassetti to accept and send a letter of thanks.
Second.
Second by Mamon. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Stain? Alright, thank you guys. We have two resolutions. Um, resolution one, uh, was mentioned briefly earlier. This is the home rule in municipal zoning. Um, the full resolution was in your packet. Uh, I do know that, uh, other towns, uh, have done this. I, I recall, uh, was it Monroe that there was a legal case?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah.
And.
As well, Shelton as well.
Okay.
Similar.
Um.
Quite a few towns and cities.
Yeah, so any, any, uh, comment, questions on that?
By way of background as to it, to actually what it's calling for, um, home rule is a legal, uh, principle that allows municipalities, cities and towns in Connecticut to allow their local zoning board to tailor zoning policies that reflect its community. Um, and that's what we do. You know, we're used to doing this day in and day out. When applications are made for developments, they go to our local P and Z. And in that way, our local community is represented. The concern here, what's making things different right now, is there are a lot of bills pending in the Connecticut House and the Senate that call for changes to local, uh, local zoning. Specifically, changes to local zoning that would eliminate and overrule the home rule, uh, principle. And essentially, uh, trump local zoning. And specifically, to mandate communities, um, to construct multifamily developments regardless of whatever else is going on in their community. It's basically, uh, dissolving the home rule, dissolving local planning boards and creating a one-size-fits-all form of zoning, uh, which would be entirely dependent on the state to determine, um, you know, if a project goes forward or not. This is not a good thing. We want local control to remain. We want our zoning boards to be able to protect residents. Um, and of course, when it comes to multifamily construction, as Sheila can tell you, density already is an issue with the city of Ansonia. Um, and so, you know, having Ansonia subject to this type of legislation, if it comes down, uh, is, is going to pose quite a problem to the residents that already are living here. And so the resolution is about opposing those changes. And again, it's going to be up to our state delegation to fight against it. And so we're certainly calling on the support of our state representative, state senator to fight against this legislation. But ultimately, it's up to the House and the Senate to pass or not pass, uh, a bill here. We, we don't want them cutting into the local ability to protect ourselves and to determine in our future in terms of development. But Sheila, you can probably talk a little more as to the situation we currently have.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think John said it very well, but the bill is a one-size-fits-all approach to housing. Um, it gives no regard to municipal infrastructure, the ability to afford municipal infrastructure. In other words, another unfunded mandate from the state. Um, and it gives us no ability to locate certain types of housing in areas that we find are most suitable for the, for, uh, types of housing. The city of Ansonia has a longstanding and well-developed economic and land use plan to revitalize its urban areas where the infrastructure exists to support it and preserves its rare and highly valued open spaces and recreational areas. A one-size-fits-all state land use regulation does not work for a city like Ansonia who already represents a thriving and diverse community. And the city of Ansonia as a community is the best entity to make land use decisions on its behalf. And that's essentially what we're, what we're saying here in this resolution. So, um, this bill, it's a Senate bill, ten, ten twenty-four, but it encapsulates several House bills as well. It's, it seems to be like a knee-jerk reaction to a lot of things that are going on um, across the state and the country. But, um, it doesn't, I, I firmly believe it does not fit for Ansonia. Um, and I, and I think, uh, we, we have, we want to keep control at home where it belongs.
I don't think it fits for any of those communities. And that's why, that's why the other communities are jumping on there.
Yeah, I'm, I agreed. I'm happy to, I'm happy to bullet out some of the highlights or what I call lowlights of the bill for you, if you'd like. But, you know, I think, I think it's a good way of, of voicing our opinion. We want to keep home rule.
I make a motion.
Second. Motion by Rivers, second by Phipps. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Alright, motion passes unanimously. And thank you guys for your, uh, explanations on that as well. Uh, we have resolution, resolution number.
I'm sorry, Josh.
Yes.
I didn't realize I was on mute. I abstain.
Oh, sorry, one abstention.
I'm sorry.
Stroman. A silent abstention.
Yeah, I didn't really, I didn't know I was on mute.
Uh, Trish, did you get that?
Yes, I did.
Okay, perfect. Alright, we have one other resolution. Um, I believe there was a presentation on this earlier when I wasn't here. Is that correct?
Yes, yes.
This is regarding participation in PARs, Public Agency Post Retirement Healthcare Plan.
Josh, we can run that entire presentation back for you if you'd like. We're standing by. You, you good today?
Yes. I will watch that, right? And when I'm ready.
Making a motion, right?
Where's Kate? Can I save it for, uh, when I can't sleep at night?
Yeah.
Okay.
I did see it. Kurt, uh, Kurt sent it to me because I thought I wasn't going to see it, but, uh, I don't think I missed too much, other than, uh, half hour. So do we have a motion to adopt this?
So move.
Motion.
Motion by Yaman, second, uh, by Cassetti. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Alright, Diana, you on mute?
I, I, I'm fine with it.
Okay, alright.
Nice job on that, Kurt.
Yeah.
And, and Kate.
Yeah.
I'll be sure to let Kate know.
Uh, alright, appointments. We have one appointment. There were two, two appointment lists that came out with the revised one, just had one appointment, Board of Public Works. A point, reappointment for Charlie Stowe. Uh, ex officio term to expire five fourteen, twenty twenty-three.
I have a comment on that, Josh.
Sure.
Um, I'm my, uh, following my comment, I would make a, a motion to a table at this point. But I think we're being asked to approve a position that doesn't exist. Legally, it doesn't exist in our charter. And, um, I, I, it blew my socks off. I didn't know what an ex officio person was. I thought it was like Mayor Cassetti, you know, but, uh, I, I go back through minutes and I see, uh, uh, minutes of previous meetings and Charlie was referred to as a commissioner, as an alderman, you know, and, uh, people attending. And then ex officio would just showed up and, and if you read, um, re, and you read the minutes, uh, um, he's a voting member. And if you read the charter, they're only allowed four people on that commission, period. End of story. So we can't put anybody else on. Unless, unless we want to, of course, which I don't think we should.
You're saying four voting members, huh? Because the next.
Four members, period. Chapter forty-four, right below, uh, right below the budget-making process. Number forty, uh, char, uh, section forty-four of the charter. The four members on the commission in a quorum establishes three. It's a tight commission. I'm surprised it's so little, but, uh, you know, because they do handle a fairly substantial budget. But, um, right now it doesn't exist, so I don't know where it came from. And I don't think we can adopt it at this point. Nothing against Charlie. Of course, if he wants to sit on it, fine, but I don't think he has an official. Nothing against Charlie. Of course, if he wants to sit on it, fine, but I don't think he has an official position according to our charter.
All right, so we have a, we, you were making-
I moved to a table that-
You're making a motion to table. Do we have a second on the tabling?
Oops.
Second.
Second by Strowman. All in favor of taking like-
Before you, before you take the vote, Josh, I have a question really quick. And, and just ask whether or not Corp Counsel has an opinion at this point-
Right.
On what the charter- On what the charter says, because if he's reviewed it and he believes it's proper, I'd just like to hear his opinion.
But ex officio is a non-voting member, so as long as there's an understanding that that individual is going to serve in that capacity, then it's not a violation of the charter, certainly. I would agree that if, you know, you're adding a full member who has the ability to vote, um, there's a concern there. Um, but if it's ex officio, if it's certainly for, for the sake of an advisory capacity, you know, I, I don't think there's anything in the charter that speaks one way or the other to that. So the ability of the Board of Aldermen to proceed in that fashion is not against certainly violating the charter. But for voting members, if that's what the charter says, that, that's correct.
Well, for, I guess my, my second question would be then, do we need to actually vote on this? Or is this something our president can just appoint Charlie to, um, as he does with other most subcommittee members, where he could just go to Public Works as an ex officio member and report back to our board?
I mean, you're dealing with subcommittees. I mean, I think that i- i- if there's, you know, certainly the alderman voting on it isn't a bad thing, as it sort of gives it a good, uh, green light. But, um, certainly the, the president of the Board of Aldermen has the ability to assign an alderman to, you know, to sit, to give advice, you know, to be a liaison. You know, has all the authority to do that. I mean, is it up for a vote? No, this is not an impaneling, according to the charter. But, um, you know, certainly we vote all the time on things to give a recommendation, you know, to, to give support behind something. Um, and in this case, it so happens, it's, uh, to establish him as an ex officio member of a commission. Just has to come with the understanding that it doesn't have, come with the voting rights.
Well, with that as a backdrop, I still would rather have, uh, have a vote, just to be clean. Um, Bill, I think your, your, uh, motion to table-
Withdraw it.
I was gonna say, I think your motion's gonna die on the table, but-
I know.
Okay. Uh, so we, we can, uh, I, so emotion removed. All right, so, uh, all in favor of, um, Charlie as an ex officio, non-voting member of-
Excuse me?
Board of Public Works, yes.
Yeah. There isn't a motion yet.
You need a motion.
No, I'm, I'm, I'm reading, I'm reading, uh, reading this off.
Okay, sorry.
Yeah, sorry. Is there a motion to appoint Charlie as a ex officio, non-voting member, uh, to the Board of Public Works?
Motion.
Motion by Mamon, second by Cassetti. Uh, in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Abstain.
One abstention, Phipps. Thank you. That's a third-
Josh, this is an aside before we put it to bed. Uh, uh, when I was going back through previous, uh, minutes of the, uh, commission, uh, uh, Public Works Commission, there were a couple of meetings where I believe he was counted as, uh, the minimum quorum. So, you know, we've got to maybe get back to the, the commission and tell them to be careful. Don't count him as a quorum, because if they do and they pass things, uh, come back, it could come back to bite them.
That's, that's a fair point, Bill.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah. Yep.
Uh, that's a thirty-year term. I think I mentioned that before.
Right.
Yes, absolutely. Twenty thirty-five.
Lifetime, lifetime.
Free lifetime term.
Everybody voted for it.
Yeah, John, John made a good point. There, there's been a few things that have come up this year that, um, I've looked at the charter and you don't actually need to do that, but I, I prefer to run them through the board, so at least you guys know. Um, you know, they're, they're not in the charter, they're not in the code. But it's, I think it's just cleaner and it, and it's more upfront to, to have a, have a vote, whether you needed it or not. So I, I'm glad John was able to articulate that better than I did. Um, all right. Uh, we have nothing on ordinance, I don't believe, right?
No, sir, just a meeting, May twentieth at seven o'clock.
May twenty, seven o'clock. All right, uh, any new business?
I've got, uh, one point, Josh.
Sure.
Um, and it's, um, well, it looks like it's pointed at Sheila, but please don't take it as that, Sheila. But it is a concern that I have, uh, regarding S H W and the fact that it's still there, and I think that we've got to become proactive and get that building down before we wind up with another lawsuit that John is gonna have to defend, and we're gonna be the culprit. Because I know I complained, uh, actually, I sent a note to, uh, the mayor with the dirty sidewalk up there, and it's now ours, and they were able to get up there and clean it, and don't you know, we had a windstorm, and there's all kinds of debris on the sidewalk again. And God forbid that, well, another hunk of metal comes off of there in a windstorm, uh, and clocks somebody. You know, we're gonna be in what you call the deep doo-doo. So, um, um, I think we've got to, um, you know, settle down and say, look, it, this is a priority, and we've got to get it done.
As well, Alderman Phipps and, you know, President Schuer, I can tell you the fire is lit. This is a top priority. We are, uh, you know, full steam ahead on the project, our issue, and we don't like to, you know, disparage, obviously, the state here. Um, but there are hurdles. There are things we need to, to check off for the state officials that have control over, um, the oversight of, of environmental and, uh, boxes we need to check off before we're allowed to do the demolition. So on the city's end, we've been moving very quickly. We've met all our milestones. Um, we've invited the state down. The state has been touring the site, making recommendations. But I'll tell you, you know, the conversations we have, you know, probably you might not believe. Um, recently, we had Shippo tour the site, and, uh, they did tell us, they gave us some initial feedback, that they figured some of these bus, uh, structures may be historic. Um, and we want to think about what we can solve before we, you know, I, I will say, I think we, we ended up on a good note with them. I think, you know, we shared our concerns that it, yes, it's wonderful for future generations to, to be able to see these structures and learn about them. But we basically told them, look, as long as they're here, they're going to be preventing those future generations from getting jobs, uh, from investing in their education, that these structures may be old, they may be, uh, historic, um, but they aren't needed for a modern economy. And I do think the conversations we had were productive. I think they understood, and, and I think we have a plan going forward. Um, as Sheila has mentioned in the past, the Extrusion Mill is that one salvageable building, and we do have funding to, to, to save it. We're hoping that could be the cornerstone of our mitigation plan, they call it. But this, on the city end, we've been full steam, a top priority. There's nothing more than the mayor and the team would like to see that building, uh, series of buildings on the ground. However, we have to do it the right way. If we were to press demolition without getting environmental clearance, we would be in a whole lot of trouble, and Sheila, um, you know, is a specialist in this area.
Right. And I hold the phone.
Is there, is there anything hanging up or at the end of the string?
So, yeah, Bill, we are, well, first of all, I appreciate, um-
Who's phone? That's that, uh, that's an iPhone that's on?
It says iPhone.
Bill, appreciate your comments, actually, and they'll help. They actually are helping build the case as Trish, as soon as you get the notes. Um, we, I appreciate what you're saying. We, we have a, yeah, it's a sense, it's a sense of urgency that we all have. Um, we've had to go through a series of hurdles because we're using, um, grant funds to do this, to do this project. But one of the hurdles also is EPA, and EPA has asked us to wait until they come in to remove tanks before we do, do the demolition for fear that that will cause even more contamination. Um, to, to, uh, w- will cause more contamination. So, uh, we're, we're hoping that this summer, early fall, we'll get some of those buildings down. Um, but yeah, we, we, we believe it's an urgent situation, and we're just waiting on the feds and the state, and we're pushing them every day. And your comments help, as a matter of fact, so. Take it.
It's, um, it's rather discouraging if you walk to the back of the armory or the back of a, assumption and look over onto those roofs. It scares the bejesus out of me.
Yep, I agree.
Something, something out of there.
Would it help if they voted a brief resolution, um, asking for, uh, ex, expediting this process? Both the EPA at the federal level and also the state level? I mean, it doesn't have to be anything fancy if we could just agree on a sentence, you know, for the health, safety of the residents. Um, and also, of course, the protection of the cit, right liability reasons for the city. Urge, Alderman urge, the, uh, uh, expediting of the, uh, of the approvals for the demolition of copper and brass, and we could take that as part of our argument to the state and the federal.
Happy, be, be very pleased with that.
Yeah.
I'll get behind that, Mr. Phipps, for sure.
Be great.
Yeah. Yeah, absolutely.
All right. We'll prepare a resolution for you guys and-
Especially if you vote on it even, and we could adopt new business in, in a regular meeting. So, you know, if you have that statement, we can have a vote tonight, and when we could memorialize that vote to urge the, the feder, the, um, federal and state agencies to expedite the, um, demo, the approvals for demolition of the S H W building um, in the interest of health and safety of our, uh, Ansonia residents.
I, I would make that motion.
I'd second it.
Second.
Motion by Phipps, second by Rivers. He beat you, sorry. Um, all in favor of accepting that? And Trish, you have that line. Can you read that back first?
No.
You don't have it, do you?
It's recorded.
I have it. I have the gist of it.
Okay.
I'll make sure I have it word for word when you get it back as, as minutes.
All right. Exactly what John said. Perfect.
Exactly.
All right.
And I'll encourage the expediting of the approvals.
Wait, the vote, all in favor?
Hi.
Bye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? All right, motion passed unanimously. Thanks, Bill.
Thank you, everyone.
All right. And any other new business?
New business?
We, we have to do the inlands wetlands.
Where's that?
Oh, no, there was an, Bobby, there was an amended, uh, appointments.
For Dave Connolly's appointment?
Yeah, that was, that was the original appointment. We got a second updated one. That was not on there.
Oh. Sorry.
They were both, they were, they were both in the, they were both included in the packet, but one of them was more up-
Yep.
Any other new business? Someone's, you know?
I have something I'd like to ask.
Alderman Cassetti.
All right, concerning the Mariner Building, um, is the city gonna continue a dialogue with, uh, our friend Stan who came to the meeting? Is there any, uh, plan to do that, or what next steps there might be for him? Uh, I know they're looking to, to form a citizens' task force, I believe, to find out and determine what the future use of that building will be.
Yeah, that's something that, um, I, 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 I hear his, uh, frustration and actually his concern, you know?
Yeah.
I, I was on planning when, uh, when that thing was, uh, pushed through, and that was in a time where we had no place to put the old people that were sick. There was no, um, homes around, and, uh, that's why that one came through. It's the first retention pond in the, in the town that was used for drainage. And, um, it's, as the fellow said, you know, it came out nice, and then all of a sudden, something happened in the business, and they left, oh, I do notice they're still paying taxes on it. Why they're keeping a building to rot and pay taxes on it is beyond me, but, um, uh, it's so- something that actually is a planning issue. And we, we would probably be outside the realm of, um, uh, responsibility if we were to pick it up and go around the Planning and Zoning Commission. That's a straight-up planning, uh, thing.
Oh, i- i- isn't it privately owned? How can we form a committee to tell somebody what to do with their land or their property if it's within zone?
That's just it.
I believe they said they wanted a committee, but I don't think it's necessary, as long as we have a dialogue with them. I think that just to hear their concerns is probably an accomplishment.
Wouldn't that go to planning, though? Similar, similar to, you know, I hate to say this, but similar to the motel kind of setup. Wouldn't it follow the same path, you know, whatever the future use of the property is going to be? You know, it's zoned the way it is right now. Taxes are paid, the properties, you know, it, it's rotting, but, you know, grass is cut, it's being maintained. You know, wouldn't we, you know, wouldn't we let, you know, the process work the way it is? Again, send it to zoning, let zoning do their piece, a- and, you know, work it through.
That's a, I, I, I don't think zoning can do anything because there's no pending application or anything like that before it. So I think like, I, I mean, I understand his point is that he wants to have some sort of conversation about the property and possibly with the neighbors and things like that. I would encourage him to do that privately. Talk to his neighbors, get together, and, and if he wants to talk to the landowners or even come back and, and make comments publicly to us about what his thoughts are on what the property could be. I mean, I'm happy to listen to them. But I don't think we have any authority or ability to, um, sway the owner there or even ask planning and zoning to do that. Um, I think that goes well beyond what we are empowered to do.
I think until it becomes blighted, Joe, probably. Um, but they're, they're current on taxes, and, uh, they, they just seem to have no plan to sell the property. They are just holding on to it for whatever reason.
Could I add something? I think it'd make a fine place for a, a middle school.
I don't know about that one.
I mean, it's a nice, okay, it's a nice location. It's just-
The building's already built.
Joe, I, I spent a lot of time on this committee and, uh, Derby, uh, they have a pretty new middle school.
Committee, Joe.
Right now.
What?
You don't need them.
May twenty-fifth, Joe, seven thirty, Zoom meeting. Come to regionalization, my friend.
Well, I just, um, don't think that, um, we have the power to even do that. That's a private land. They're paying their taxes. Um, there's not a whole lot that we can tell them to do with that property.
If any.
Right.
I just noticed that, uh, when that letter came to us, I, I took a ride up there just to check it out. They've got four very large barrels that block in the entrance to their parking lot. So somebody must have got to somebody and, uh, had those barrels put up, because other than that, you could drive into their parking lot. You know, they couldn't say anything except the parking lot, but-
There were people parking in there. There was, you know, different, uh, different vehicles in there at different times. I've, I've noticed, yeah, I passed by there quite, quite a few times a week, driving to, uh, you know, soccer practice for my daughter. So I do notice prior to those going up there were folks parked in there. I don't know who they were, but-
See, I, I don't see it being any different than the area down on Olson Drive that you have people in the community that are saying how they want to utilize that property. So if you're gonna have a committee for those folks.
Not privately, it's privately owned.
Not all.
Privately owned, though.
We're, we're-
I, that's privately owned and the-
Talking to other people about it. I think they have an inkling that the city might buy it and do something with it. That's what I believe they've got in their, in their game plan.
I don't.
I, I didn't get that from that email at all.
No. Well, they had no, they had no plan. They had no idea what they would use it for, and they didn't even know. All they want to do is just get a, a little committee of their own civilians to, uh, to work on it.
Yeah, they're free to do that. You know, I, I don't think the city should appoint that, though.
Yeah.
No. You're right. We shouldn't. We have no business doing that.
Diane, uh, on the, the, um, the property over on Olson is way different, because that was owned by the, um, housing, and, um-
It cost us five million dollars too.
Right. And we could only do certain things with that.
Right.
No, 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 no. My comment was, it's no more than getting groups together.
Yeah, for properties that you-
That properties that they, that you had no control over. That's all I'm saying.
Right.
As an example.
Right.
Yeah.
I mean-
Bought that property.
Yeah, ju- ju- yeah, uh, yeah, just like in our fifth ward over here, where the school was, uh, torn down. Um, you know, people were saying what they, they want to do with it, and we used to all them, look, bring your ideas to the Board of Aldermen. When the city decides what we're gonna do, then we will listen to your ideas.
All right, I just, I just wanted to run it by us. New business, if, if there's no action, then.
You wanted to extend, you wanted to extend this meeting. That's what-
Exactly.
Yeah, I love it.
No, we were on a, we were on a course, Joe.
He was gonna roll in.
So thanks for opening that can of worms. No, but I do appreciate the conversation. And I, I agree with you guys that, you know, being private property, I don't know that we want to be injecting ourselves in that. And I missed the conversation earlier. Um, he did come to the, to the meeting, correct?
Yeah.
Yes.
Um.
So, so maybe, you know, and I don't know, Sheila, maybe, I don't know if you could help this. Can you get Stan? So, so maybe, you know, I don't know, Sheila, maybe, I don't know if you could help this. Can you get Stanley or Stan in touch with the, you know, the property owner? Maybe they could, you know, form some sort of, you know, contact and then they could form the committee to maybe meet with the owner and and determine, you know, kind of do what Stan's looking to do.
Sure, absolutely.
That's a good idea, Stoney.
All right, so no action, but we can, we can start with that. All right, I.
Thank you.
Hate to ask this, any other new business? Going three times, all right, moving on.
He hates to ask it.
Is there any old business that we need to to circle back to? Nope, all right.
Go into executive session.
Motion to go to executive session, by Rivers, second by. Are all in favor? All right, who do we need for a good session? We have one item.
Our usual group, myself. Alderman, mayor staff.
The dog wants to go too.
He always wants to go somewhere.
The dog cannot repeat what's discussed in.
She might get there quicker than me.
We need that baby next time, Diane. We need that baby next time.
Diane, please, make it, make it to this executive session, okay?
Like it before me.
No stopping at the store, okay?
Oh wow, twice in a night, wow, we doing real good.
You're cruising for a bruising, man.
Yeah, this is not gonna end well for you or your friend.
Yeah.
Yeah, your friend.
All right, motion to return to regular session?
Don't move, second.
By Cassetti, second by Rivers, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, we have on the item of consolidated solar appeals REV, VINT, Sunrun, Sunova, etc. What's our pleasure?
Motion authorized as discussed in executive session and empower the city to execute the documents, any documents that are necessary.
Motion by Yaman, second by Rivers, any discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
I need to abstain, Josh.
Oh, yes, I need to abstain, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Two abstentions, Mamon and Rivers, so motion passes.
At least you know who the friend is.
Yeah.
There ain't no solar on my house, guys.
Second, second.
Motion to adjourn, Rivers, second by Tar, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you all.
Night, all.
Stay safe.